The Committee on Finance will come to order. Good morning, everyone. Today is Friday, February 25th, and we have, I think, three agendas. So first up is House Bill 1562 HD1 relating to early learning board. The early learning board. First up is University of Hawaii David Lenzner. Oh, he's not here, sorry, wrong person. Next one, Executive Office of Early Learning. Kalima Mohar.
Aloha Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita and Committee members. I'm Kalima Mohar, interim director for the Executive Office on Early Learning. EOL stands on its written testimony. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up is DOE, OCID.
Good morning, Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita and members of the committee. I'm Terry Ushijima, interim Assistant Superintendent with the Department of Education, applying on behalf of interim Superintendent Keith Hayashi. The Hawaii State Department of Education stands by its written testimony in support of HB 1562 HD1. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony. And we're available if you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all that have signed up to testify by Zoom. Members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 1939 HD1 relating to early learning. First up is Executive Office of Early Learning.
Aloha again Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita and Committee members. Kalima Mohar, interim director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. EOL stands on this testimony supporting the intent of this bill, and we wish to extend our appreciation for considering the capacity needs of our office in light of the expansion of early learning. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have, members. Any questions of the testifier? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1999 HD1 relating to education. First up is Department of Human Services.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair and Committee members. Scott Nakasone, Department of Human Services. The department stands on its written testimony in support, and I'm here to help answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Executive Office of Early Learning.
Aloha Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita and Committee members. Kalima Mohar, I'm sorry, Kalima Mohar, interim director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. EOL stands on its written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is AA Coalition, Sharon Akamura.
Yes, Aloha Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. My name is Sherry Nakamura, Director of AA Coalition. We support HB 1999 HD1. We know that in addition to state funds, there are federal and county subsidies available for families that allow access to early learning. Our hope is that our state is tracking these funding mechanisms so that we can optimize them to the fullest extent. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next is Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks.
Aloha Vice Chair Yamashita and Committee members. I'm Catherine Ayer with HCN Speaks. We stand in strong support of the measure. You have my testimony. I just wanted to highlight why the funding for preschool open doors was so critical. Last year, because of the state's economic conditions, the budget was cut by almost 7 million. We saw a reduction in children served by almost half. This is a program that serves kids that aren't eligible for other childcare subsidies, but would still be difficult for those families to pay for childcare early learning programs on their own. This, this year, there was an additional waitlist and other children who weren't able to be served because the funding just wasn't there. And so we appreciate the support and the additional funding to restore on the program, back to what it was in previous years or more. And thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, members. Any questions?
We actually. Just a comment. Maybe somebody on staff should look into the title of the bill. It might be defective. It's relating to education and we're dealing with a sort of education-like entity within the Department of Human Services. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 2000 HD1 relating to education. First up is Executive Office of Early Learning.
Aloha Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita and members of the committee. I'm Kalima Mohar, interim director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. EOL stands on its written testimony and would like to emphasize our interest in actively participating in expansion efforts with the School Facilities Authority. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
And next up is Department of Transportation, Alan Oshima.
Good morning. It's not the Department of Transportation. I'm the chair of the School Facilities Authority. Ed Sniffin is interim executive director. I've testified in his behalf. We stand on our written testimony, seek some allowance for flexibility to use the funds that are very necessary. We stand in support of early childhood development and facilities, just seeking some flexibility as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is AA Coalition.
Yes, Aloha Vice Chair and members of the committee. Sherry Nakamura, Director of AA Coalition. We support HB 2000 HD1. We agree that the school facilities agencies is the agency is the entity that will be able to expand most expediently on early learning facilities. We just ask that there is coordination between the SFA and applicable state agencies for effective execution. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next up is HSTA.
Aloha Chair, members of the committee. Laverne Moore speaking on behalf of Osetuie Junior, President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. We support this bill. We know well the importance of early learning and that it begins in preschool. Data shows the earlier you work with children, the earlier you can remediate difficulties they're having and put them on the road to success at very early. To facilitate the demand for public preschools in Hawaii, we believe it is important to aim for preschool on every elementary school campus across the state. That effort could start with this bill. The Hawaii State Teachers Association asks for your support for this needed entity of having preschool on every campus. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Kama Maha Schools, Y Ale, Ale Ale.
Aloha, Aloha Kako, Aloha Chair Luke and Vice Chair Yamashita. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify. My name is Y Ale Ale Sarsona. I am the Vice President of HI ALO at Kama Maha Schools. My primary focus for Kama Maha is in early learning. And first of all, just mahalo for your support in passing Act 46, which kind of set the stage for, as the previous testimony just shared, for opening preschool open to many, many families across our state. We know it's a need. We've lost a tremendous amount of seats during the pandemic. And we'd love to see an expansion as well as making up those, those seats. So we strongly support HB 2000 HD1 and are here to be a partner in, in this effort in expanding preschool through facilities. Mahalo for the time.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have, members. Any questions?
Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, Representative.
So I have a question, maybe a couple of questions for Chair Oshima from SFA.
Yes, true. Nice to see you.
So I am just seeking clarification. You know, the, and I talked about this with Mr. Sniffin previously, but the DOE has this enormous backlog in repair and maintenance, right? And so it was made clear to me that SFA is, is really just dealing with the new construction projects. This is a very short bill. It's just a funding bill and it blanked out, so we don't know the amounts. And I am curious about the relationship between SFA and the DOE facilities, folks. And last time I spoke with A. S. Tanaka, he was unable to answer that question. So if you can talk a little bit for myself and for the public about your role, you know, and, and that's the first question. And then in the process of answering that question, can you also speak to whether or not your construction activities will be limited to public school campuses?
Let me take the second part first because I think that's easier. Not only to campuses, because the DOE has adjunct facilities that do not involve classrooms and teachers, et cetera. And so all of the properties that are held for the DOE will be subject to the SFA authority for development and compatible uses. Compatible uses could be for things like teachers, teacher housing, affordable housing, et cetera. So that's the answer to that portion. In terms of the relationship between the SFA and the DOE, my facilities group, and I think Randy Tanaka is on the call and he might be able to add more. But as we are progressing, Ed Sniffin, on behalf of the SFA, is working very closely with Assistant Soup Tanaka on things like transfer of land titles from counties to the DOE and then subsequently to the SFA so that there'll be one bucket of land titles that could be used for development, for third-party developers, et cetera. They don't have to forum shop. The other is the personnel. We currently are seeking a million dollars for next year's budget for SFA, primarily mainly to fund key positions to, to start out with, executive director and certain other chief financial officer, communications, et cetera. So that's where we are. There's an option to have transfer of certain personnel from the DOE to the SFA, and that will be worked out between the eventual director of the SFA and the DOE. What we're trying to minimize is creating a whole new subset of people and staff. We want to utilize existing people within state and state government to be able to develop projects because there is sufficient expertise in a number of agencies where we can partner with as we move forward. So that's where we are. I mean, we don't have our budget yet. We are, the governor will be appointing an executive director and we can then start moving forward.
Okay, so this budget is actually just to fund your operations. It's operations budget. Okay, and then, and then my second clarifying question is, you folks are just then going to be working with third-party developers? So essentially privatizing the process of DOE facilities?
That would be the main impetus, but there may be some state agencies that may have the, the ability to do projects on some of the lands that we identify. This bill is for capital and what we're looking for in our budget is for operating funds, and that's wholly separate. So we're starting, we have to, you know, we have to get our rules and regs in place. We have to take it out to the public. Those are all being drafted as we speak. And there are other bills that either attach us to the DOE or to the Department of Budget and Economic Development. So there are a number of things going on as we speak, but the board is organized, has been confirmed, and we are working to try to get all of those pieces put together so we can start actually doing some projects.
Okay, and then last question. Sorry Chair, if I might. Once you have completed a project, then those projects become the responsibility of DOE facilities in terms of repair and maintenance? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. If it's, if it's school-related, they would be falling into the DOE for repair and maintenance. Those repair and maintenance remains with the DOE.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you for those questions and Mr. Oshima, thank you very much. Any other questions, members? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1942 HD1 relating to student transportation. First up is, is Tanaka. I think you're muted or we're not able to hear you.
Oh, sorry about that. Hopefully we're okay now. Good morning, Vice Chair Yamashita and the committee on behalf of Superintendent Hayashi and the Department of Education, Randy Tanaka, Office of Facilities and Operations. We stand by, we've submitted testimony. We stand by that and are here to answer any questions that you may have. Hello.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all we have, members. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill. Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill. House Bill 1561 HD1 relating to education. First up is Department of Education OCID.
Good afternoon again. I'm sorry, good morning again Chair Luke and Chair Yam, Vice Chair Yamashita, Members of the Committee. Chair Ushijima here again with the Department of Education, testifying on behalf of Interim Superintendent Keith Hayashi. The Hawaii State Department of Education stands by its written testimony in support of HB 1561 HD1. The Makili'a Waipahu Community Schools for Adults have been collaboratively working with various agencies to develop an inter-agency workforce development program for youth and adults with an expressed interest in pursuing trades and other employment opportunities. The appropriation and positions provided in HB 1561 HD1 will enhance this work. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on this measure.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is HSTA.
Aloha Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Laverne Moore, speaking on behalf of Oso Tui Junior, President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. The HSD supports workforce readiness programs. Data from the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations tells us that more than 70% of jobs in the state don't require more than a high school diploma. Having students graduate with a workforce development diploma or a pre-apprenticeship certificate or other industry-recognized certificate is truly the way to serve our diverse student population with different modes of learning. Hawaii's present high school curriculum is geared toward attending college and neglect to provide the workforce readiness curriculum that is so needed in preparing all students to succeed in our ever-changing society. This workforce readiness program is a second chance for our students and adults. The Hawaii State Teachers Association asks your committee to support this bill. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all we have to testify. Before the committee members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 811 HD1 related to, relating to individual sports. First up is DOE OCID.
Good morning again Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita, Members of the Committee. Chair Ushijima again, interim Assistant Superintendent with the Department of Education, testifying on behalf of interim Superintendent Keith Hayashi. The Hawaii State Department of Education stands on our written testimony, providing comments and concerns on HB 811. Chapter 12, Homeschooling Request, allows a parent to have full autonomy and responsibility for their child's education. The chapter allows a parent to disconnect from the department with requirements involving mandatory testing and a summary report of their child's yearly progress. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on HB 811.
Hey, thank you very much. Next up, Department of Education. Keepay or pipe or pipe? That's it. Okay, next up is Stonewall Caucus of, of the Democratic Party of Hawaii, Michael Goliou.
Good morning, Representatives. This is Michael Goliou Jr. On behalf of the Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii. We are here to testify in strong opposition to this bill. We have grave concerns about the safety of bringing in homeschooled students into the, into even after-school sports, no matter which one it is. As we lay out in our testimony, that there's not the shared experiences between when you bring in a homeschool student to a public school. We have other grave concerns, especially when it comes to the funding mechanisms, as we laid out that by bringing in a homeschool student, you're now then taking away from resources from those students that actually chose that are going to that school. I know that there's people wanting out there to do, for those homeschool students to be able to participate. There are other avenues in not taking away from our stu, our public school students where those resources are set forth by our, by the, by the budgets. In preparation for this hearing, I, a couple of high school students reached out to me over the past couple of days, and one of them put it very succinctly. So our public schools aren't good enough for them to come learn at, but they're good enough to come play sports at. So I want to leave you with that. And so we, we ask that you hold this bill in committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Individual in Support, Karo McPherson.
Hello, Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita and Committee Members. I appreciate you giving me the chance to speak in strong support for HB 811. I would like to just highlight a couple of parts of the bill that we have specifically written to address the concerns that have been expressed in the past, when bills like this have been raised and have been expressed today. Things that we've included in this bill to be able to alleviate those concerns. One of those is the finance part. The, there will be no money asked from the school systems to be able to support homeschool athletes' participation in competitions alone. I would like to, I would like to highlight that these athletes will only be participating in competitions. They will not be training with any public school teams or coaches. The parents and families will completely financially support that on their own. The athletes will only come to the competitions and they will fund their entrance to the competitions, just as a school would for the competitions as well. So the, there will be no money that will come from the school system in any way that will draw anything away from the public school students. Secondly, I would like to highlight that homeschool athletes in Hawaii are able to go on to compete in NCAA sports. They are able to apply to and are accepted to many universities, colleges and programs throughout the country and world. For example, my oldest son applied to and was accepted to West Point. He also was given a four-year Air Force ROTC scholarship, all of this on the merit of his homeschool education. However, I know that a concern was raised in the past that homeschoolers don't have the same kinds of reporting needs that public school students have in regards to being eligible for sports. So I just wanted to let you know that this isn't something that is the easy way out. I, as a homeschool parent, had to fill out a 56-page document for him to, and my daughter, who's a junior this year, to be able to apply to colleges. I had to, I had to fill out the NCAA paperwork myself, which is something that the schools would normally do. I act as principal, vice-principal, counselor, career advisor. I, I do all of those things. So if, if a concern is raised that perhaps a family might pull a student who would otherwise compete in public school sports to be able to compete as a homeschooled athlete, there is so much more work that's involved in being able to support a homeschooled athlete or a student at all. That, that it's not the, the easy way out. It's not something that families might consider as a back door to be able to compete. So I wanted to be able to highlight that, so that you understood what that process is, that we have to go through all of that, which is something that we, we do, that we happily do, that we enjoy doing, to be able to support our kids. Our kids have lived in three, on three different continents. They have lived in nine different states in the United States. This is, this is a decision we made that we thought was in their best interest, not because we, we were not in favor of anything specific in the Hawaii school system, but because they had moved around so much, it really was best for them to have continuity in that part of their lives when we weren't able to provide it in other parts, because their dad had volunteered to defend and protect our country from enemies domestic and abroad. So those were the things I wanted to highlight today from my own experience and to be able to give you that information. Also, just for your information, our homeschoolers are able to participate in many programs around the island and have a various, many social experiences. For example, my son is an Eagle Scout. He came up in Scouts and was able to achieve that rank. My two daughters are currently waiting to, to sit their Eagle boards of review next week, and then they will become Eagle Scouts as well. All three of my high schoolers have participated in the junior ROTC program at Punahou School and have done very well in that. My son, in fact, was the second-in-command of the whole program when he was a senior there. He was a homeschooled student who was allowed to participate in that program. And you can see written testimony from the commander of that program that was offered today, how well he is able to incorporate homeschoolers into his program and the benefit that they provide for that. So that is my testimony. I thank you for, for being able to, for me being able to have the chance to speak to you today and to give you our perspective. We, we really would love to have the opportunity to compete. Our homeschool network for athletes especially is very small here on Oahu. So it's not something that we could create within just the homeschool network and to be able to arrive at competitions alone and to be able to compete with public school students would just raise the level of competition for the homeschoolers as well as the public school students. It would be a wonderful collaborative experience for the athletes on the island, especially in individual sports. So thank you for your time. I really appreciate your consideration of HB 811 and your support. I also have my children here today. We are actually on the East Coast, visiting my son, who's about to start Ranger School for the Army. So we weren't able to, to log in from home and we only have one device. Is it okay, Chair Luke, if my children give their testimony here on the same device?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, thank you so much. This is my daughter, Kaden.
Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita and Committee Members. My name is Kada McPherson, and I would like to thank you for your time in considering HB 811. I'm a homeschooled 11th grader and I have been homeschooled since kindergarten. I support HB 811 and believe you should too. The number of homeschool and high school athletes is very small. Our options are extremely limited. Even if we're able to form an athletic association for homeschoolers, we would still not be able to host events, because there are so few homeschooled athletes who would compete. I am the only homeschooled varsity-level springboard diver on Oahu for sure, and likely in the entire state. The skill of being able to compete well can really only be trained in competition. The divers against whom I compete, when I travel to the main, the club meets have up to 20 meets per year, whereas I only have about two in my entire high school career on Oahu. The difference in competition readiness is staggering with those numbers. This bill would provide equal access for homeschool students here in Hawaii to be able to develop the skills that public and private school students already have the opportunity to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is McPherson and I am 15 years old and in 10th grade. I have been homeschooled since kindergarten. I'm in support of HB 811, because I think homeschoolers should be able to compete in athletic events as unattached competitors. I would like to have a chance to compete in individual sports now that I am in high school. I also think it is a good opportunity for homeschoolers and public schools to support each other. Thank you for your time and for supporting HB 811.
My name is Lucas McPherson and I am 11 years old. I have been homeschooled for all my life. I support HB 811, because I like to do sports when I am in high school. I would like to run a track. That will give me the opportunity to get stronger and healthier by training hard for track meets. It would also give the public schoolers a chance to get stronger by letting other people compete in sports. Thank you for supporting HB 811.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony. Okay, Members, that's all the testimony that we have. Are there any questions? Representative Martin?
I have a question for the Chair of the Department of Education. One of the things, I'm more familiar with team sports than individual sports, but one of the issues for students on the team is not everybody gets to compete, right? There's not enough spots, not enough field time, playing time. You know, they, within the team, there is competition to get that seat in the boat or, you know, spot on the field. When it comes to individual sports, does everybody get to go? What, what would the impact of additional kids from homeschooling coming in to those competitions be for access to the opportunity to compete for the DOE students? Thank you.
Okay, I thank you for that question. I have Ray Fujino here with me from, who might be able to better answer that question, if that's okay. So I think you're asking, what is a process for individual student athletes to get on a team in order to compete?
Not exactly.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Kids that are already on the team, do they all get to play, right? My, my experience with team sports, not everybody gets to play. Just because you're on the team, only a certain number of people can be on the field or that, you know, the tennis matches, only a certain number of people actually compete. So how would this impact that access?
So the individual sports, the way this bill is written is they will come in as a, as a school, separate entity of whether they call it a school. I think we can call it a school for this purposes. And it would be, our preliminary competitions for most all individual sports is qualifying for either the division championships or the league championships. And then from there, you would qualify to move on to the state championships. So if you're an individual participating from a school, you would have the opportunity to enter those qualifying matches or competitions. Like, it's a lot different, like say at a high school, Campbell High School, if they have multiple athletes in the same event or division or weight class or, or the sport, depending on the sport itself, then yes, it would be similar to what you just described on a team that only the top qualifiers would move on. But at some point, they will all get a chance to enter that qualifying matches.
Thank you very much. Members, any other questions?
Yeah, I actually meant this just kind of as a point of clarification, and Mr. Fujino can correct me, since he's got a lot more experience in this. But I think kind of what he was alluding to is that specifically for things like track, you have qualifying standards to enable someone to participate in like a conference championship or in a state tournament. But in some of those cases, they do restrict the number of participants. So in theory, an unattached competitor could potentially take the place of a public school competitor just by beating them out and being like the number 28 qualifier as an example. Unless, unless I'm mistaken on that, but.
Yes, that's correct. They would, we would have slots according to our league. So every league will have a number of qualifiers. I'm assuming in this bill, if the homeschool family lives on Oahu, they would be somehow attached. I, I'm not sure how that would work. Would it have to be, I guess we would have to allow for some at-large births. But it's usually done as, on a percentage, so I don't, I'm not sure if that'll work in this case. I'm, do you understand what I'm saying? You would get the number of slots according to how big, you know, how, how big your league is.
That's the way. Okay, so it's actually with that in mind, my question would be, do you know if the ILH currently allows homeschool participants as unattached competitors?
No, they do not. Currently, all, all leagues, you either have to be enrolled in a public, private or charter school.
Okay, and then to your knowledge, and if anyone knows, it would be you. Can this be done without legislation? Can the leagues themselves make this decision on league-by-league basis? Or would this require this legislation to pass to give them that power?
I'm not, I'm not sure of that. I, I don't know how to answer that. If it's a legal, if it's a liability issue, a legal issue, you know, I'm not sure if the leagues would have to take on that liability, you know, that's, it goes into many different facets.
Yeah, because, because it would seem to me specifically with the ILH that because they're not governed by the HRS in the same way, that they would have some degree of flexibility that perhaps the BIF and KIF and OIA and them folks don't have. But, but no, thank you for.
Vice Chair?
Um, yeah, that's not proper. Thank you.
But thank you for your comments, though.
All right, Members, any questions? Any further questions?
Vice Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, please proceed.
Uh, thank you. Um, my question is for the DOE again, Mr. Ushijima. You know, if, if this bill were to pass, how would an individual, a student who is homeschooled, choose which public school they would want to compete with? Is it based on their, where they live or, because I'm certain that certain areas have a higher. Because I'm certain that certain areas have a higher population of homeschoolers and certain areas do not.
Thank you for that question. I think those are some of the details that we would really need to look at carefully. And we had questions, you know, that about this whole bill as it is. Initial guess might be the geographic area in which they reside. And that's, you know, how we determine where our current students attend which public school unless they have a geographic exception. So that would be my first thought.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions?
Real quick, sorry. This is for the, for the DOE. Sorry, this is a lot of questions for me in particular. But with that in mind, with the confusion over, so my, my issue with the language is that they would only be able to participate for the public school that they'd otherwise be required to attend. But there are certain public schools that do not have all these sports available. Would it be cleaner in that sense to just, if they're going to be unattached, why does it matter what district they live in? Should they, if they're unattached, aren't they just unattached? Wouldn't that be a cleaner way to move this forward?
That, that might be, I think that we would still need a lot more clarity on the different aspects of this. So what I offered was just my initial thoughts at this time. So there would be an enormous amount of details that would of course have to be clarified and worked on.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, please go ahead.
I have another question now. So if, so Rev Todd made an interesting point that not every single school has a program. If we were to allow students that are homeschooled choose whichever school they want to use on the program, would that be fair to public school students who don't have that option to choose or unless the public school students already do have that option to choose? Let's say a school doesn't have a tennis program. Can they transfer to another school and compete there?
Uh, no, that, that is not an option currently with public schools. If, if they live in a geographical area, area school where say tennis is not, there's not enough players to form a tennis team or for whatever reason, that student would have to do geographic exception, would have to apply for a geographic exception to another school. And that is something that is not, I guess, you know, emphasized in the department is to GE to another school just for the sake of, you know, athletics activity.
Yes, and if I may add, when we do geographic exceptions, depending on the number of available slots a school may have, they might have to do a chance drawing to see which students can attend. And it's usually based on other criteria, more related to academic programs that are not offered at their schools and the athletic programs, to my knowledge, is not one of those prioritized reasons for priority on a geographic exception. So yes, I think it would provide an advantage to the homeschool students if they were to be able to select just a certain sport.
Thank you so much. No further questions. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. Any members, any further questions? Okay, this measure has a long way to go. We can take some of this up with the subject matter committee, but it's, it's still a long way to go. So we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill seventeen seventy five HD two relating to civil rights. First up is Hawaii Civil Rights Commission.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. The Hawaii Civil Rights Commission stands on its written testimony in support of House Bill seventeen seventy five. I do want to mention our concern about the conflict language that's on page four of the House Draft two. It was added in the House Draft two and the meaning is unclear. So we'd like that addressed either in the committee report or the entity that added it because conflict is a legal concern. We are available for questions and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Attorney General.
Good morning, Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita, members of the committee, Deputy Attorney General Anna Horiuchi testifying on behalf of the department. As set forth in our testimony, we're concerned that the term educational program or activity is not currently defined. There's nothing in terms of who is providing it, who's receiving it, or what content does or does not constitute an educational program or activity. Because of this, we're concerned that the bill could be construed to apply to a wide variety of private educational programs as well as state departments and agencies. The bill may be overbroad and could be applied to departments and agencies for activities that fall beyond the purview of Title IX. For that reason, the department requests that if the bill continues to move, that the bill be amended to define what an educational program or activity is so that it's specific as to what entities will be mandated to comply with the requirements of the bill. And if I may, I wanted to note something that is not in our written testimony. As the committee might be aware, the Biden administration is currently working on federal rules on this exact subject. In fact, yesterday it came to my attention that the US Department of Education recently submitted draft amendments to the Title IX regulations to the Office of Information and Regulatory Affairs, which is a division of the Office of Management and Budget. And it's responsible for coordinating the review of all executive branch regulations. Given what's happening at the federal level, we would recommend that the committee hold off and wait to see what happens with the federal rules so that whatever is passed is consistent with the final federal regulations. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and I'll stand by for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Department of Education, Sean Bacon.
Good morning, Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita and members of the committee. Sean Bacon, interim Assistant Superintendent for the Office of Talent Management, testifying on behalf of Superintendent Hayashi and the Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony in support and is offering comments for House Bill seventeen seventy five, House Draft two. We thank you for the opportunity to testify and are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. University of Hawaii, Jan Gouya.
Good morning, Vice Chair Yamashita and members of the committee. The University of Hawaii stands on its written testimony in support of this measure and we would like to use this opportunity to thank this committee for their consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii, Michael Glory Jr.
Good, good morning again, Michael Glory Jr., Chair of the Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii. We stand in strong support of this legislation. And in response to the Attorney General, my community is still having PTSD after the previous administration. So we definitely need something at the state level should another disastrous federal elections happen. And we have a horrible administration like we just got over for the last, the previous, the previous administration. And so that while we, we appreciate everything and we support everything that President Biden and Vice, not and Vice President Harris are doing, we definitely need the safeguards at the state level that this, this bill would bring to make sure that we, we don't go backwards even if some of our red state friends do. So we encourage you to move this bill forward and make whatever needed amendments to take care of the, any ambiguity that the AG brought up. Mahalo and thank you for hearing this bill.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is AAUW of Hawaii, Yonki Overly. I know you're testifying for that and also for the Hawaii State Democratic Women's Caucus.
That's right. Chair and Vice Chair Yamashita and members of committee. My name is Yonki Overly and I'm the Public Policy Chair for AAUW. And as you mentioned, I'm also representing Democratic Women's Caucus here today. Michael, be me to it, okay? So, but I'll echo it again, in 2017, previous administration took out the protection of LGBT students under Title IX. So in 2018, I was so proud that we were the very first state to pass state law, Title IX law to keep the protection of LGBT students under Title IX. So this is the first time we've done this, just a reminder. And some of you are there when we passed that. And we made national news because we were the first to do so and so quickly, so proud of us. So we have an opportunity to do it again and as Michael also mentioned, we may be very pleased because although I haven't seen it, the new Title IX rules under Corona administration is supposed to be very good. So really excited to see it. However, you do not know what's going to happen in 2024. So I do believe good parts of Title IX should be qualified to protect our students under state law. That's point number one. And point number two is I appreciate that there is appropriation to fund Title IX person in, for the charter schools. I am so excited to see that amendment. So since I'm talking to Finance Committee, I will make special appeal to you, okay? And then a third point is I agree with both AG's office as well as Civil Rights Commission about the clarification being needed, especially the points the AG's office made. And then last, and this was really the only point that I was gonna testify to, I'm finally getting around to it. I did, I did ask, and we are in strong support of this bill, but we are asking that we put back the expansion of definition back in the language. And if that's too extensive, because the original language was multi-pages, there was a simpler version from California Senate Bill four nine three that they passed in 2019 and that we could use simpler version to expand on it. And the reason I'm asking for this, I'll give you a couple of real examples to make the point. One of my son's friend, who is in PhD program, recently went MIA after two years into the program. And although the friends know that he's alive because he's active on social media, nobody knows where he is and they know that he's been harassed by his faculty advisor. Another friend who is also in PhD program, she's considering dropping out because she is being harassed by her faculty advisor. So this is, the sexual harassment by faculty advisor is unfortunately too common. Harassment in general by faculty advisor unfortunately is way too common. So that's just an example. And if we don't expand the definition, we are talking about under Title IX, sexual harassment case needing to be so, so, so severe that, that kids cannot go to school anymore. So are we gonna let harassment build up to get to that point? And see these talented, hardworking kids drop out of school before we take the case? So those are two real examples that I wanted to share with you. Fortunately, neither of them are from Hawaii. But again, I think this is way too common of a story. So thank you for listening and thank you for your consideration and thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. That's all we have, members. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, excuse me. House Bill nineteen forty one HD one relating to education. First up, yes, you want to go back?
Vice Chair.
Yes, please.
Could I ask a question of AG on the prior bill?
Please, go ahead.
Civil, civil rights?
Go ahead.
For Attorney General. Given your remarks, would a private preschool or childcare entity receiving state monies for the preschool open doors program, which we discussed earlier on the agenda, have to report?
Yes, I believe it would qualify under the bill's definition as a covered entity because a covered entity includes any educational program or activity that receives state funding.
So what about Bishop Museum, which is designated by statute as a state museum? And also Ilani Palace, which is designated by statute as a state museum for, you know, history of the monarchy, et cetera. Would those have to report?
Yes, I think, I think it would be, I think that arguably they would, they are entities that provide educational programs or activities that receive state funding. So as covered entities, they would have to, for example, designate a Title IX coordinator, publicize that Title IX coordinator's identity and develop Title IX-like policies. That's what they would have to do as a covered entity under the bill.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to House Bill nineteen forty one HD one relating to education. First up is the State Department of Education Superintendent Kitayashi.
Good morning, Vice Chair Yamashita and members of the House Committee on Finance, Kara Tanimura, interim Assistant Superintendent for the Office of Strategy, Innovation and Performance on behalf of interim Superintendent Keith Hayashi, Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony providing comments on House Bill nineteen forty one, House Draft one. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on this measure.
Thank you very much. Next up is Hawaii After School Alliance, Paula Adams.
Aloha, Vice Chair Yamashita and members of the committee. My name is Paula Adams. I am with the Hawaii After School Alliance to support this bill to establish a full services community school. As you can see in my written testimony, community schools is an evidence-based strategy to support our students and families. As you may know, the community school's side coordinator, the person dedicated to coordinating resources and community partnerships in the school plays a key role in this strategy. Listening to one of the principals in Kohala, it is evident how important the side coordinator is. The principal shared that the community school's side coordinator is fully on board to help the principal to address challenges facing students and families. He's part of the solution and adds much-needed capacity to the school leadership team. He uses social media, flyers and personal communication to reach out to families. He's in tune with the community and if there are any concerns of any kind, he'll reach out to the principal and community partners. He connects the school with resources. He's out in the community, talking to parents, helping to strengthen ties to the community. The side coordinator even did a presentation with the parents to show the impact of attendance. And we know that we have a huge problem with chronic absenteeism. The principals also share that community schools support their students because they have more access to resources from the community. These are just a few examples of what community schools can do for our community. For this reason, we know, we would like to see an allocation of $2.4 million in this bill, which will only fund five schools. But from conversations with the schools, we know that there are at least 20 schools in the state of Hawaii interested in becoming a community school. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Next up is HSTA.
Aloha, Chair, members of the committee, Laverne Moore, speaking on behalf of Osetui Jr., President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. The Hawaii State Teachers Association supports this bill. A community school must have a good structure with all stakeholders involved to figure out how from the bottom up to transform a school. There are lots of tools and strategies to do this. But if you want a district-wide strategy, if you want transformation, not by charter, not by fire and rehire or other silver bullets coming from private companies, you need deliberate, engaging, inclusive and very rigorous problem solving. At community schools, stakeholders identify problems and work together to find solutions. As quoted by Anna Grant, the community school coordinator at Lakewood Elementary School in Durham, North Carolina. in Durham, North Carolina, a member of the National Education Association. The HSD supports the network of services and vision in the community schools model with wraparound services like healthcare and amplifies social services access to school campuses. Because learning never happens in isolation, community schools provide the needed services before, during, and after school. The HSD asks for your support for this needed bill. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next up is Individual Support. Alessa Peta Alaimeleata, sorry.
Aloha and talaha. Chair and Vice Chair and Committee, you did well pronouncing my name. Elisa Peta Alaimeleata, Executive Director, representing Samoan Language Center here in the state of Hawaii. We're a nonprofit organization and a community school that has been in operation since 2008. I want to mention that we, you know, we fully support HB 1941 and mainly because we've been in experience with, you know, in this type of, you know, community-based development. We were awarded by Harvard University Ash Foundation and mainly because they have seen the, you know, the, you know, the importance of community, you know, involvement in education. We often say in education, parent and community working together. This is an opportunity for the state of Hawaii to stand up and, you know, ensure that we are accountable for that. We are very grateful as a nonprofit organization. We work side by side with Keith Hayashi, our DOE Superintendent under the 21st Century Community Learning Centers as well as the After School Alliance with Paula Adams. I also like to share through the years of our implementation in the community, we, a lot of us, community teachers have volunteered. And a lot of us, we've seen the success of our work in our state of Hawaii. Through the years of our community school establishment in the Waipahu complex, we were able to establish the first ever Samoan Language Symposium here in the state of Hawaii. We initiated that opportunity that is now becoming an international, you know, scholarly gathering where all researchers from the colleges and universities all over to come together and, and share about their research and scholarly work. I think it's important for our post-secondary education students, college students that are attending college to, to come together and share those types of opportunities. So we are very proud because our Samoan Language Symposium is connecting everyone throughout to share their, you know, their ideas. I also like to mention that during the COVID outreach, you know, working together with community schools, our outreach as well as engagement was very easy because the community schools took that leadership in order to connect with families as well as the community. Those are hard-to-reach families in the community. We have a lack of teachers as well. Throughout our work in this, in this, in our community-based program, all of our part-time community teachers worked now, are now working as teacher assistants for the Department of Education. I think this is a great way to funnel some of those well-experienced community, you know, members that can become teachers and working together with the Department of Education. I stand here in support of this opportunity because it's time for us to actually look at how we can support each other in terms of our work and what we do for our state of Hawaii. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify. Mahalo and fofte la.
Thank you very much. That's all we have, members. Are there any questions?
Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, Representative Bruce, so please proceed.
So my question is for the DOE, the Superintendent's Office. And, and I think that I really wanted to ask you folks, this is a national model, the community schools. And I think NEA has been advocating for it for many, many years, as has HSTA. And I think they do so because they recognize that we need to have stronger connections between our, our community resources and folks who are in the schools so that we can provide wraparound services for our students. And I wanted to ask the superintendent or, you know, the DOE, how you folks think about this model in comparison to the model that's being proposed in HB 1834, which is really an externalizing model. So it takes grants that would go to individual families rather than bringing those community resources into the schools to provide for all of the children who need them. If you could do a little compare and contrast for us, if, if that's possible.
Thank you, Representative. I don't have that bill on hand with me right now, but I can, I can take a look at it and get back to you on it. Yes, we, we do stand in support of the concept and we would be happy to work with the other stakeholders on this to make sure that we gauge the interest and that we create something that would be appropriate for all of the different communities.
Okay, so are you folks watching what's happening in community schools like Kohala?
Yes, yes, I'm sure. Not my office specifically, but the other offices are, yes.
Okay, AS Ushijima, are you folks paying attention to the impact on educational outcomes of the community school model?
I, I haven't specifically, but I think that's something that we can take a look at.
Okay, I'd be interested in that.
We'll also work, you know, with our Office of Student Support section. So, and, and together with our, with interim Assistant Superintendent Tanimura.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Members, any other questions, Representative Kobyashi, please?
Just a comment. Again, maybe attorney should look at the possibility that this might be in violation of Chapter 42 F, Grants and Aid. One sentence would correct that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 2345 HD1 relating to land. First up is DOE Superintendent.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Yamashita, members of the committee. Randy Tanaka, Assistant Superintendent for Facilities and Operations on behalf of Interim Superintendent Keith Hayashi and the department. The department stands on its written testimony supporting the intent of House Bill 2345 and the development of affordable housing opportunities for teachers. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify. Any questions on bill available? Thank you, aloha.
Thank you very much. HHFDC.
Aloha, good morning, Vice Chair Yamashita, members of the Finance Committee, Denise Matsubara for HHFDC. We stand on our written testimony offering comments. We'd like to note that it appears that a substantial portion of this property identified in the measure is currently a detention basin that would require a significant sum to cover the cost of filling it. There'd also be additional funds needed to maintain the landscape and the area for public safety reasons until a developer is selected and can take site control. We also want to echo the concerns articulated in VNF's testimony related to constraints in using our financing program like the low-income housing tax credit to give preference to a specific working class in light of the federal housing laws. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. HSTA.
Aloha, Laverne Moore, Aloha Chair and members of the committee. Laverne Moore speaking on behalf of Osetuji, President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. While HSD supports this bill, we would ask the following language to be removed on our second page. A reduction or waiver of school impact fees owed by the seller or lesser for any project of the developer. As a planning commissioner in the 90s, we held a developer in Kapolei to deed 14 acres of land to the DOE for the impact his housing project already had on Eva Elementary School that was bursting at the seams. Before we would place his future development for Kapolei on our agenda, he needed to deed the 14 acres to the Department of Education and which he did. This is what the HSD calls being socially responsible for the impact one makes on our committee, I mean, our community. Secondly, please consider amending this bill to prioritize all our HID DOE teachers for we not only want to recruit, but retain our teachers in Hawaii. Please support this bill with our recommended amendments. Mahalo.
All right, thank you very much. That's all we have, members. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1994 HD1 relating to the Department of Education. First up is DOE Superintendent.
Hello, Vice Chair Yamashita, members of the committee. Randy Tanaka, Operations and Facilities. The department stands on its written testimony in supporting the intent of House Bill 1994, House Draft 1, recognizes the importance of increasing tree canopies on public school grounds. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Willing to answer any questions, aloha.
Thank you. Next up is DLNR, David Smith.
There, good morning, David Smith, Administrator with the Division of Forestry and Wildlife. We support this measure and support the arborist position that would help to care for trees going forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. DLNR, Heather McMillan.
Hello, this is Heather McMillan, urban and community forester with DLNR. We stand on our testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. DLNR, Robert Batsuda. Deputy Director. Not present, okay. Next up is Hawaii Farm to School, Hui, Hawaii Public Health Institute, Lydie Bernal.
Yes, Aloha Maikako, Lydie Bernal, Coordinator of the Hawaii Farm to School, Hui statewide network with the Hawaii Public Health Institute. We stand on our written support of this bill. Thank you so much.
All right, that's all we have, members. Are there any questions?
Vice Chair, I have one.
Yeah, please.
This is for Randy Tanaka, DOE. How many arborists does DOE currently employ full-time?
We have one for statewide effort.
Is single arborist for, to monitor and maintain trees across Hawaii DOE properties?
That, that is correct. Now, you should also know that we have a contractor that we work with to, to also help us with that effort.
Okay. From the current circumstances of one arborist, is that sufficient to maintain current DOE facilities?
It, it, it's a struggle because as a number of the trees continue to mature and grow, we have pruning programs, we have to reevaluate the root intrusions and that we take counsel of our arborists. So they got a pretty heavy workload across the state.
Okay, so this addition to, of one full-time arborist from the spill would, would help that effort?
Absolutely, you know, in terms of percentages, it's 100% increase. But, you know, any help will help us be more efficient at this.
All right, thank you. No further questions, Vice Chair.
Thank you very much, members. Any further questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 2250 HD1 relating to gardens. First up is DOE.
Hello, Vice Chair and members of the, the committee. Randy Tanaka, Office of Facilities and Operations on behalf of Interim Superintendent Keith Hayashi and the Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony providing comments on House Bill 2250, House Draft 1. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify. Hello.
Thank you very much. Next up is Hawaii Farm to School, Hui, Hawaii Public Health Institute, Lydie Bernal.
Aloha Maikako, the Hawaii Farm to School, Hui stands on our written testimony in support of this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up is ITCD, Craig Nakamoto.
Good morning, Vice Chair Yamashita and members of the committee. Craig Nakamoto, on behalf of Deepak Nupati and Hawaii Community Development Authority. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all we have, members. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 2284 HD1 relating to equitable distribution of our own resources for Hawaiian immersion teachers. First up is University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita, members of committee. Nathan Morata, Dean of the College of Education here at the University of Hawaii at Manoa. We stand by our written testimony in support and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is University of Hawaii, Hilo. Kanani Makah.
Aloha, eluna, ho'omalu lu, hopeluna, ho'omalu, Yamashita, mena lala, oke komike kala. My name is Kanani Noia Makahimoku and I am the Program Coordinator for Kaua Viola Indigenous Teacher Education Program at Kaka Ulaoki Ali Kalani, College of Hawaiian Language at UH Hilo. And I am representing both the colleges, Faculty Senate, and Kaua Viola. We support Bill HB 2284 and stand by our written testimony. Our program specializes in preparing teachers for Hawaiian medium and immersion classrooms since 1998. Currently, students at the UH Manoa's teacher preparation program are the only ones eligible to apply for the Grow Our Own funds. This bill ensures that both UH Manoa and UH Hilo students are supported. Mahalo for this opportunity to provide testimony. I'm available to answer questions.
Next up is Department of Education, Sean Baker.
Good morning, Chair Luke, Vice Chair Nak. Excuse me. And members of the committee, Sean Baker, Interim Assistant Superintendent of the Office of Talent Management. Sorry about that. On behalf of Interim Superintendent Keith Hayashi and the Department of Education, the department stands on its written testimony in support of House Bill 2284, House Draft 1. We thank you for the opportunity to testify and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. HSTA, Laverne Moore.
Aloha, Chair and members of the committee. Laverne Moore speaking on behalf of Osetuji Junior, President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. We support this legislation. The Hawaii Language Immersion Program continues to play a critical role in the perpetuation of Hawaiian culture, history, language, values, and practices as provided for by the Constitution of the state of Hawaii. There is a shortage of Hawaiian immersion teachers and it has reached a critical point in the last decade. This bill will facilitate the state's and DOE's goals and policies by alleviating some of the financial barriers to develop qualified Kumua Kaapunis. With the state's goals of expanding Hawaiian immersion in our public school, including our public charter schools, the Hawaii State Teachers Association asks your committee to support this bill to move forward on the promise. Thank you for my opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is, where am I? Next up is Aloha Ana Legal Group, Katie Frey. Sure, Charlie. Not present, okay, next up is Kahaka Ulaoki, the College of Hawaiian School Language, Hilo.
Aloha, this is Kanani Noia Makahimoku and I have presented my testimony. Mahalo.
All right. Very much. Okay, next up is Individual Support, Brianna Rodriguez. Why, not that one, sorry. Na lea ka'ou, umaui. Not here. Okay, next is Individual Support, Keira. Korea.
Aloha'me'ka'ko, ka'ha'faria, in, standing by my written testimony. Mahalo'ui.
Okay, thank you. We have one more testifier. Eo'me' Malani.
Kukahiko. Kukahiko. Aloha'a'ka'ko. My name is Eo'me' Lanikukahiko, and I work at the College of Education at Manoa. I think this bill would go a long way to support students that want to seek out Hawaiian immersion licensure and also encourage current employees of the DOE to seek licensure. I will stand mostly on my recent testimony, but I'll just add that as a parent of two students that go to ke'kula'ka'apunio anuenui this year, out of the five teachers that my older son has, four of them are not licensed, and I want to support their journey to being licensed, well-qualified teachers. So mahalo'ui.
All right. Thank you very much, members. That's all the testifiers we have. Are there any questions?
I'm so sorry.
Oh, please. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
So may I please provide testimony on behalf of the Aha'kauleo?
Please proceed.
Mahalo'ui. Aloha'me, Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita, and members. The Aha'kauleo stands by its written testimony in strong support of two-two-eight-four. And would like to highlight that we are a dual-language state, English and Hawaiian. And this bill will ensure several things, such as addressing the teacher shortages in Hawaiian immersion schools and ensuring that we, as a state agencies, are addressing our constitutional duty of promoting Hawaiian language, history, and culture. I'm mahalo'ui for the opportunity to provide testimony.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony. Members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill eighteen thirty-four HD two relating to education. First up is DOE OCID.
Good afternoon, Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita, and members of the committee. Again, Chair Ushijima here, Interim Assistant Superintendent with the Department of Education, testifying on behalf of Interim Superintendent Keith Ayashi. The Hawaii State Department of Education stands by its written testimony, respectfully providing comments. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony for HB one-eight-three-four HD two.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up is Hawaii Kids Care. David Mishiro.
Aloha, Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita, and members of the committee. What Kids Care stands on our written testimony in strong support of HB eighteen thirty-four HD two. The challenges our families face at this time are immense and complex. We need multiple layers and modes of support. We did want to note for the record our recommendation for a language amendment in our written testimony. While this change may be more appropriately handled in a subject matter committee committee, I do believe this amendment would help to clarify the scope and intent of the bill. Should the Finance Committee pass this bill, we would be suggesting the amendment in the next committee. Mahalo for your consideration and hearing this bill.
Right. Thank you very much, members. That's all we have. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill. Yep, I'm sorry. Representative Russo.
I have a question for the DOE, please. Is Ushijima?
Hello, I'm here.
Hi.
Oh, hi.
So my question with respect to the approach outlined in this bill. And and you alluded to my concerns actually in your testimony, which I am concerned about the diversion of DOE funds. And whether you think that it might be just more effective to allocate those funds directly to the schools so that they can meet the needs of our economically struggling students? I know that, you know, with our community school models, we do have some structures in place or some models that are working on this, but can you speak to that a little bit, like the concerns about how this might take funds that are badly sorely needed within the DOE outside the DOE in ways that might not be effective?
Yes, thank you for that question. There's. Yes, I think that it would take away funding that could otherwise be used more appropriately through our existing channels of our programs with the, especially with general funds. We know that, you know, those are so critical to support our schools. The schools already do look at the needs of students and what and find ways to provide. We have homeless liaisons who help with those families. As a former vice principal, I remember working with faith-based organizations at the start of school to provide students with backpacks, with school supplies. We know that we have some PCNCs of parent network coordinators. They are very aware of families who have high needs and find ways through donations or, you know, their their parent organizations to provide different needs for their students. And as for the academic aspect, as you know, we are putting a lot of effort into providing a learning acceleration and looking at the reducing the learning gaps that our students have. And we are very strategic about the types of academic programs that, you know, are used to meet those individual needs that are in line with the school efforts. So we think that this is duplicative, and we also, you know, care very much about equity. So if you're the kind of limited funds on a first-come-first-served base, I think like if an outside organization were to continue to do this, that would be an additional support. But to use our general funds to do this and not address the needs in an equitable fashion is something that I think would be, I would urge you to consider.
Okay, thanks so much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, next, though, moving on to the next bill. House Bill fifteen eighty-six HD two relating to disaster response. First up, Ha'ima Lu'kmaire.
Good after, sorry. Good afternoon, Chair Vice Chair. My name is Luke Myers, the Administrator of the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. We stand on our written testimony on the offering comments on House Bill fifteen eighty-six and are available for discussion necessary. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Department of Education, Brian Halitz.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Yamashita, members of the committee, Brian Halitz, DOE CFO. On behalf of Interim Superintendent Keith Ayashi, the department stands on its written testimony in support of the amendments made in this HD two, which would allow the department to retain federal reimbursements even when the original appropriation that may be used to pay for disaster response may have since lapsed. So our support is really focused and on the amendments made to the HD one to remove the Chapter thirty-seven amendment. So we're being proposed in the HD one. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all we have, members. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill twenty-three oh-two HD one relating to the University of Hawaii's C-Grant College Program. First up, Lu'kmaire.
Good afternoon, Chair Vice Chair. My name is Luke Myers, the Administrator of the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. Ha'ima stands on our written testimony in support of HB twenty-three oh-two and are available for discussions necessary. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, University of Hawaii.
Dennis Huang. Aloha, Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita, and committee members. I'm Dennis Huang, faculty UHC Grant, and our director cannot be testified, cannot appear today. So he asked me to testify testify on his behalf. UHC Grant is in support of HB twenty-three oh-two and stands by our testimony. And we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Right. Thank you very much. Next up, Friends of Hilo. Dr. Kiyone Dudley. Okay, not here. Okay, members, that's all we have. Are there any questions on this measure? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill fifteen eighty-eight, House Draft one, related to hazard mitigation. First up, Ha'ima.
Good afternoon, Chair Vice Chair. My name is Luke Myers, the Administrator of the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. Ha'ima stands on our written testimony in support of House Bill fifteen eighty-eight and are available for discussion necessary. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That's all we have. Any questions, members? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill. House Bill twenty-two twenty HD one relating to emergency management. First up, Ha'ima.
Good afternoon, Chair Vice Chair. My name is Luke Myers, the Administrator of the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. Ha'ima stands on our written testimony in support of House Bill twenty-one twenty and are available for discussions necessary. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Department of Defense, General Hara.
Good afternoon, Chair Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Holly Reyna. I'm a public relations specialist within Ha'ima, and I am testifying on behalf of General Hara, who cannot make it today. The department stands on its written testimony in support of this bill, and we're available for questions.
Thank you very much. That's all we have, members. Any questions? All right, seeing none, move on to the next bill, House Bill fifteen eighty-seven HD one relating to the interstate mutual aid system. First up is Ha'ima.
Good afternoon, Chair Vice Chair. My name is Luke Myers, the Administrator of the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. Ha'ima stands on our written testimony in support of House Bill fifteen eighty-seven and are available for discussions necessary. Thank you so much.
All right, next is Hawaii Association for Justice. Not here. Okay. Uh, next is Department of Health. Health Resources Administration. I think, but that was the next bill. Sorry, sorry. Okay, not here. Okay, members, are there any other testifiers? I guess not. Any questions, members? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill. House Bill eighteen thirty-nine HD two related to transit accommodation tax. Let's see. First up, Department of Taxation, Director Choi.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, members of the Finance Committee, Ted Shiraishi, on behalf of the Department of Taxation, and we stand on our written testimony providing comments.
Thank you very much. Next up is Tax Foundation of Hawaii. I'm Yama Chita. No, not here. Okay, members, that's all we have. Moving on to final bill, House Bill twenty-one fifty-nine HD one relating to Workforce Development Board. First, let's see, DLNR, DLIR.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Yamashita and members of the Committee on Finance. Annie Stoffield, Director of Department of Labor. I want to thank the Chair and the Vice Chair for hearing this very important administrative bill this afternoon. The department stands on its written testimony with comments, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, that's all the testifiers we have. Members, any questions? The members, we're going to take a recess.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, please.
Did you skip a bill?
Did I skip a bill? I don't think I did. Which bill did I skip?
I believe when you called on Department of Health, was that supposed to be for House Bill twenty-three ninety-two?
Hey, that was. You called that bill, and there was only one testifier. And then we went to eighteen thirty-nine HD two, Department of Taxation testified. And then we finished off with House Bill twenty-one fifty-nine HD one. Okay, so we are done. Members, any questions? Okay, we're going to recess. Thinking we'll be back. Soon. 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 Soon.
Good afternoon, committee on finance will reconvene for decision making on our 11:00 AM agenda. Thank you, everyone, members and audience members who have joined us in Zoom and members who are here live. So first up is House Bill 1562, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
Okay, voting on House Bill 1562, House Draft One, as is Chair votes, I vice chair votes, I representatives Bronco. Excused Eli.
I.
Hope.
I.
Iligan.
I.
Kobayashi.
I.
Martin.
I.
Ishimoto.
I.
Russo.
I.
Sayama.
I.
Pam.
I.
Todd.
I.
Wahlberger. Excuse.
I, 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 I.
That's how many eyes?
Three.
Three eyes. And McDermott.
Yes, yes.
Cool, yes, it's okay. Just adopted, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is House Bill 1939, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
Okay, members of morning, voting on House Bill 1939 HD1 recommendations to pass as is. Noting the excuse absence of Representative Bronco. Until further notice, he's going to be marked excuse. Are there any reservations? Any notes? As just adopted, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1999, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion if not be acceptable.
Okay, we're voting on House Bill 1999, House Draft One recommendation has is. Are there any reservations or no?
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 2000, House Draft One. This measure will be deferred for decision making until end of agenda and Wednesday, next week, Wednesday. Next up is House Bill 1942, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. Now please take the vote.
Okay, House Bill 1942 HD1. As is any reservation, knows.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1561, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. And that be acceptable.
Okay, House Bill 1561, House Draft One, as is any reservations. Knows adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 811, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote. Representative Russo.
I'll be voting with reservations.
Thank you. Anybody else? Representative. Representative Martin reservation, Representative Pam.
I'll also be voting for reservation. My reservations comes from the geographic exemptions. I hope that we can figure that out before passing on can make it be on law.
Thank you very much. Representative Todd, voting reservation. Thank you. And then Representative Bronco is on the. On our Zoom.
Okay, we got the. Okay. I have with reservations, Representative Martin, Russo, Pam, and Todd. Are there any others? Okay, all of this vote, I your chairs, and noting the presence of Representative Bronco, all of this vote, I.
Thank you very much. Next up is House Bill 1775, House Draft Two recommendation is to pass as is any discussion.
Chair, no vote for McDermott.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion if not feasible.
Okay, voting on House Bill 1775 HD2, as is, knowing the no vote for Representative McDermott, are there any reservations? Knows. Or others vote, I, your top.
Thank you very much. Next up is House Bill 1941, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. Now please take the vote.
Okay, House Bill 1941 HD1, as is any reservations. Knows adopted.
Thank you very much. Next up is House Bill 2045, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
House Bill 20345 HD1, as is any reservations. Knows reservation for Representative Russo. Any others, all others vote, I, representative, adopted.
Thank you very much. Next up is House Bill 1994, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as HD2. If I could turn it over to Representative Martin to explain the amendments.
And thank you, Chair. So it's minor amendments on page three, line 12, but just add in. Province liability for the school and department of education and maintains open door space for school use. To the criteria for tree planting locations. On the same page, line three, 14. Changing the name of the program from shade trees and native plants program to shade and fruit tree program. And that change of name is consistent through the record, the rest of the document. And then deleting on page four, line 17. The farm to school coordinator shall supervise the program. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. In addition to that, blanking out the appropriation and technical non substantial changes. Any discussion? Yes, Representative Kobayashi.
Are we blanking out the number of arperous?
No, we're just in blanking out the the dollar amount. Thank you very much. Any other discussion if not feasible.
House Bill 1994 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Knows adopted.
Thank you very much. Next up is House Bill 2250, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. Not feasible.
House Bill 2250 HD1, as is, are there any reservations? Knows adopted.
Thank you very much. Next up is House Bill 2284, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion.
House Bill 2284 HD1, as is any reservations, know. Adopted.
Thank you very much. Next up is House Bill 1834, House Draft Two recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. Uh, please take the vote.
Okay, House Bill 1834, House Draft Two recommendation is to pass as is, are there any reservations?
No vote.
No, no vote for Representative Russo. Are there any other knows or reservations? Okay, all others vote, I adopted.
Thank you very much. Next up is House Bill 1586, House Draft Two. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion.
Okay, House Bill 1586, House Draft Two, as is any reservation. Or knows adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 2302, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
House Bill 2302 HD1, as is any reservations. Knows adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1518, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
Okay, House Bill 1588, House Draft One, as is, are there reservations or no? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 2120, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
House Bill 2120 HD1, as is any reservation, knows adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1587, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
House Bill 1587, House Draft One, as is any reservations, knows. Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 2392, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. Now please take the vote.
House Bill 2392 HD1, as is any reservations, know. Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1839, House Draft Two recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
House Bill 1839, House Draft Two, as is, any reservations. The vote for Representative Martin, any other reservations or knows? All of this vote, I recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much. Lastly, House Bill 2159, House Draft One recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
Okay, House Bill 2159 HD1, as is any reservations. Knows adopted.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to our second agenda. First up is House Bill 315, House Draft One. First up is University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members. Calverton for the University of Hawaii. We stand on our testimony in support of the measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is the University of Hawaii Foundation, Mr. John Chan.
Oh, good afternoon, Chair Lu, Vice Chair Yamashita, and the members of the committee. My name is John Han, Vice President of Administration and CFO for the University of Hawaii Foundation. The foundation stand by our written testimony in support of the measure as amended in HD1 and available for questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. That's all the testifiers. Any questions, members? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill 2188. First up is University of Hawaii.
Good Chair, Calvert Young again. University of Hawaii stands on this testimony. In support of this measure, this measure will allow the continuance of an approach that has been in place since 2009 to cost share expenses for salaries out of the general fund of the University of Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is E N F.
Chair, Craig, like Chair Committee members, I'm Craig Girai, Director of Finance. We'll stand on our written testimony and available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the, that's all the testifiers. Any questions? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill 2185, University of Hawaii.
Thank you, Chair Calvert Young again. University of Hawaii stands on its testimony in support. We'll want to note for the members that this measure authorizes revenue bonds, but the university does not currently have any plans or targeted projects to be funded with revenue bonds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the testifiers indicated they will testify. Any questions? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill 1731, House Draft One. First up is D O E. Terry Ushijima. Not here, okay? If not, University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair Lu, Vice Chair Yamashita, and members of the committee. I am Hay Okimoto, Associate Vice President for Student Affairs for the University of Hawaii system. And I stand on my written testimony in support of this bill. I also have with me Judy Olivera, Director of Student and Academic Support for the U A system, available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. That's all the testifiers. Any questions, members? Now let's move on to the next bill, House Bill 1488. House Draft One, first up is Attorney General's Office.
Good afternoon, Laurie Tenggawa, Deputy Attorney General. The department submitted its written comments. And we appreciate the committee's consideration of our comments, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Next up is D O E. I don't think she was there last time, but I will call D O E again. Miss Terry Ushijima. If not, University of Hawaii.
I'm back again, and I, I'm Hay Okimoto, and I am standing on my written testimony in strong support of 1488.
Okay, last call for Hawaii Department of Education. If not, that's all the testifiers. Any questions?
My question?
Yes.
Um, for D O E. Is anyone here from D O E?
Hi, I'm sorry, yeah, having some problems. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm here.
Okay, Miss Ushijima.
Sorry about that. Um.
On this bill, it talks about to be eligible. You must be enrolled in high school for 12 consecutive months. Is that possible for most of? Hawaii public high school students?
Um. So I think it means that they were enrolled for those previous months.
It says 12 consecutive months.
Yes, I'm trying to. Um. So. I, when I, I'm thinking that it means like a full year. I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
Oh, that's all right then. Okay. I mean. When this bill proceeds further, maybe somebody should look into that.
Yes, we will look more carefully. We, we are supporting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill 1488. Oh, we just did that. If not, let's move on to 2206. First up is University of Hawaii.
Um, aloha, Dave Matlin, University of Hawaii Manoa Athletics Director. Good afternoon, Chair Lu, Vice Chair Yamashita, and committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on House Bill 22206 to support both University of Hawaii Manoa and Hilo Athletics. Stand by my written testimony and will be available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Next up is University of Hawaii at Hilo, Mr. Pat Gillian.
Aloha, Chair Lu, and Vice Chair Yamashita, and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide written testimony, which we stand on in support of HB 2206 HD1. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That's all the testifiers. Any questions, members? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill 22. 2220. Actually, no one indicated they wanted to testify in this bill. So we will move on to the next bill, 22, sorry, 2015, House Draft One. First up is University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, I'm Camille Nelson. I'm the Dean of the William S. Richardson School of Law. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee Members. I stand on our written testimony and will remain to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Next up is Mark Patterson. If not, Mr. Jonathan Osorio.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Lu, Vice Chair Yamashita. I'm John Osorio, and submitted testimony. I stand on the testimony and am available for questions.
Thank you very much. That's all the testifiers. Any questions, members? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill 1885, House Draft One. We received numerous testimony, but no one indicated that they wanted to testify via Zoom. So let's move on to the next bill, House Bill 2397, House Draft One. First up is D B E. Mr. Bert Lum.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Bert Lum. I'm the Broadbent Strategy Officer for D B E here, and I stand on my testimony. I provide comments and am available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is D C C A Director Catherine Colone.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Catherine Colone on behalf of D C C A. I will stand on our comments and be available for any questions you may have. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Next up is House Bill 2397. Oh, sorry. Okay, next up is Department of Transportation. Okay, next up is Ocean Networks.
Good afternoon, Chair Lu, Vice Chair Yamashita, members of the committee, Cliff Miyagi on behalf of Ocean Networks. We stand on our submitted testimony in support. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Janine Sukie, Hawaiian Telecom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Janine Sukie with Hawaiian Telecom. We submitted comments and we're standing on our testimony. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Sandy Wong. Okay, if not, that's all the testifiers. Any questions, members? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill 2276, House Draft One. First up is D O N R. We actually have D O N R, David Smith, Heather McMillan, and Deputy Director Robert Masuda. I'm not sure which one will be tested.
Hello, this is Heather McMillan, D O N R, Urban and Community Forester. I don't see that our administrator, David Smith, is here, so representing our department. I will say that we stand on our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Department of Transportation. Okay, next up is Capula Madras. That's all the testifiers. Any questions, members? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill 1872, House Draft One. First up is D O N R. Either David Smith, Jason Omick, or Deputy Director Masuda.
Aloha, Chair. This is Jason Omick standing in for David Smith. And we stand by our written testimony as submitted and are available for questions if needed.
Thank you very much. Next is Hawaii Game Management Advisory Commission. Next up is Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good afternoon, Chair Lu, Vice Chair Yamashita, members of the committee, Brown Miamola here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Will stand on our written testimony supporting intent and recognizing importance of game animals as a sustainable food source. And we do respectfully ask that the costs and threats to farming and agriculture be considered. So we did include in our testimonial simple method. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next up is Clayton Kuhle. Thank you. Next up is Capula Madras. Okay, that's all the testifiers. Any questions, members? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill 1670, House Draft One. First up is Land News Commission.
Aloha, Chair. This is Scott Derrickson, the Chief Planner, State Land News Commission. We'll stand on our written testimony, but available for questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. That's all the testifiers. Any questions, members? And let's move on to the next bill, House Bill 1671, House Draft One. Again, Mr. Scott Derrickson.
Yeah, aloha, Chair. I'm still Scott Derrickson, and. Yes, 1671, we'll stand on our testimony. We'd like to point out, just to clarify that. For 1671, this is just intended to be a temporary subcommittee, not a, not. for sixteen seventy-one, this is just intended to be a temporary subcommittee, not a not a permanent fixture until Land Study Bureau Soil Classifications are are studied in more detail and an alternative way to regulate uses in the agricultural district are come to come about.
Thank you very much. Next up is Office of Planning.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair and Members, Rodney Funicoshi from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. OPSD offers comments and concerns and referring SB two zero five six, which is a comprehensive study for soil ratings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Department of Agriculture.
Good afternoon, Chair Luke and Members of the Committee. We will stand on our written testimony, but I just want to highlight the our concerns that the what the bill will require will be somewhat of a piecemeal approach to, you know, revamping the land study bureau system. And we would prefer and recommend that we go with the comprehensive review that's proposed in House Bill sixteen sixty-eight and the companion Senate Bill twenty fifty-six. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Brian Yomota on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Will stand on our written testimony, providing comments. I would like to add, Chair, if I may, that we also agree with OPSD and DOE that SB two zero five six SD one is probably a better vehicle to accomplish what's trying to be accomplished. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. That's all the testifiers. Any questions? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill seventeen sixty-six, House Draft One. First up, it is Hawaii State Ahmoku Council. Okay, next up is D-N-R.
Good afternoon, Chair, Members of the Committee, Vice Chair Kirk Cottrell, Division of State Parks Administrator. We stand in very strong support of this measure as we do also with the following measure HB two four four six. And if given a preference, HB two four four six would be our desired vehicle with the caveat, we would like to spend the money before twenty fifty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, it is Capula Madras. I don't think she's here. Okay, next up is Sandy Bonispa. Okay, that's all the test, that's all the testifiers who testified, who indicated they will testify. Any questions, members? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill two four four six, House Draft One, State Hawaii State Ahmoku. I don't think she was here last time. So let's move on to Mr. Cottrell.
Uh, yeah, same as before. We prefer this vehicle two four four six and really appreciate the consideration. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. That's all the testifiers. Any questions, members? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill one five five two. First up, it is the Stadium Authority.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. My name's Ryan Andrews. I'm the Acting Manager of Aloha Stadium. And the authority stands on our written testimony in support of this measure. And we appreciate the clarification that this measure brings to the composition of the Stadium Authority Board. Mahalo for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. That's all the testifiers. Any questions, members? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill sixteen thirty-one, House Draft One. First up, it is Department of Taxation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Ted Churey for the Department of Taxation, and we stand on our written testimony, providing comments.
Thank you. Next up is D-N-R.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members, Claire Manuel, Deputy with the Water Commission. We stand on our written testimony and support, offering comments. And myself and Neil Fuji are here for questions if you have any. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up is Tax Foundation. Okay. That's all the testifiers. Any questions? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill two four one seven, House Draft One. First up, it is D-N-R.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee, Ian Hero Cal with D-N-R Land Division. Will stand on our testimony in support of the measure and be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other testifiers from D-N-R, but or are you covering everybody else? Kevin Moore and also Suji.
Yes, we're all here as backup and can answer questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all the testifiers. Any questions? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill two zero one six, House Draft One. First up, it is Mr. Cottrell.
Good afternoon again, Kirk Cottrell, Administrator, Division of State Parks, and we stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up is the Pillars LLC.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Can you hear me? Oh, yeah, come on. Okay. Oh, yeah, thank you for your opportunity to testify for this bill. I'm representing the Pillars LLC and personally as well, I grew up in the Lani Kila housing area and very vested in kind of projects like these. There's a felt need for parks like this, not just in Kalii, but for local communities all around Hawaii. I do believe that developing sand island recreational area can be a start, something valuable and special for a state, especially like this bill states, if it's done with community mind. We do do work in different community centers and around the housing projects, and we have also been surveying people about, you know, this possibly development of this area, and so far it's been very positive. There is a felt need by aunties and uncles for safer and cleaner areas for themselves and the family. Young adults want more areas of community for activity and gatherings, and there's nonprofits as well in the area that want to support products like these that serve our locals in a special way. I believe that this project is, yeah, as it says, the People's Park. There is a felt need for better parks in Kalii. And I do think as well with the tension between urban developers and locals that this project can be a feat in a sense of this continuing the path of our state progressing and building more forms of equity. So I definitely support this bill and mahalo for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. There, that's all the testifiers who indicated that they wanted to testify. Any questions, members? If not, let's move on to the next bill, House Bill eighteen twenty-seven, House Draft One. First up, it is HCD.
Good afternoon, Chair Luke and Vice Chair Yamashita, Craig Nakamoto for Deepak Nipati and HCD. We stand on our testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is D-N-R.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Ian Hero Cal with D-N-R Land Division. Will stand on our testimony, supporting the intent of the measure and offering our comments and be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the testifiers. Any questions? If not, let's move on to the last bill, House Bill seventeen eighty-eight, House Draft Two. First up, it is D-N-R.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members, Kevin Moore with Land Division. Will stand on our written testimony in opposition to this measure. More available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, it is Councilmember Subli Lloyd. Not, that's all the testifiers. Any questions? If not, let's do decision making in ten minutes. We'll reconvene in ten minutes.
Thank you, everyone. Committee on Finance, what we can be for decision making on our 1230 agenda. First up is House Bill 315, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
Okay, House Bill 315, HD one, as is Chair Voltsai, Vice Chair Voltsai, Representative Bronco, excuse, Representative Eli.
I.
Hope.
Hi.
Iligan.
Hi.
Kobayashi.
Hi.
Martin.
Hi.
Mishimoto.
Hi.
Perusso.
Hi.
Sayama.
Hi.
Cam.
Hi.
Todd.
Hi.
Wild Burger.
Hi.
McDermott.
Yes, yes, please.
Thank you. Adopted.
Thank you very much. Next up is House Bill 2188. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
Okay, House Bill 2188, as is noting the excuse absent Representative Bronco throughout the rest of this agenda. Are there any reservations or no's? Jay, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 2185, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
House Bill 2185, House Draft one, as is, are there any reservations? No's? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1731, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
House Bill 1731, House Draft one, as is, any reservations? No's? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1480, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
House Bill 1488, HD one, as is, any reservations? No's? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 2206, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
Yeah, I figure. Uh, no vote for McDermott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, House Bill 2206, House Draft one, as is noting the no vote of Representative McDermott. Are there any other no votes? Any reservations? All of these both I adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 2220, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
House Bill 2220, HD one, as is, any reservations? No's? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 2015, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as a HD two, blanking out the amount and position, and technical non-substantive changes. Any discussion? If not feasible.
Okay, House Bill 2015, HD one, with amendments, are there any reservations? No's? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1885, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
Okay, House Bill 1885, HD one, as is, are there any reservations? No's? Adopted.
Next up is House Bill 2397, House Draft two. Recommendation is to pass as a HD three, making the University of Hawaii as the expanding agency. And also, we will put in language for them to be able to capture federal funds and technical non-substantive changes. Any discussion, if not feasible?
House Bill 2397, HD two, with amendments, any reservations? No's? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 2276, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
House Bill 2276, HD one, as is, any reservations? No's? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1872, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
House Bill 1872, HD one, as is, any reservations?
reservations for Wild Burger, please.
Reservations for Wild Burger, any other reservations? Any no's? All of these both I adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1670, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
Okay, House Bill 1670, HD one, as is, are there any reservations? No's? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1671, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Kobayashi, yes.
Um. Reservations for me. I think Land Use Commission's main job is to make land use decisions rather than to establish a classification and then by itself decide on those classifications. So the roles should be separated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Representative Perusso.
With reservations.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Representative Martin. Thank you very much. Any other discussion, if not, please take the vote.
Okay, House Bill 1671, HD one.
HD one, as is.
Um, noting the reservations for Kobayashi, Martin, and Perusso. Are there any other reservations? No's? Representative Bronco, excuse, all of it.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1766, House Draft one, as the recommendation of the UNRWA will differ since it's duplicative and it's encompassed in the next bill, House Bill 2446, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as a HD two, blanking out the amount and the position counts and technical non-substantive changes. Any discussion, if not feasible?
The House Bill 2446, HD one, with amendments, are there any reservations? No's? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1552, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
House Bill 1552, HD one, as is, any reservation? No's? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1631, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
House Bill 1631, HD one, as is, any reservations? No's? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 2417, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
Okay, House Bill 2417, HD ones, as is, any reservations? No's? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 2016, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
House Bill 2016, 2016, HD one, as is, are there any reservations or no's? Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1827, House Draft one. Recommendation is to pass as a HD two, adding some clarifying and technical changes, non-technical substantive changes. Any discussion? If not, please take the vote.
The House Bill 1827, HD one, with amendments, are there any reservations? No's?
No vote for Wild Burger, please.
No vote for Wild Burger. Are there any other no votes? Okay, all of this both I, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 1788, House Draft two. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion, if not feasible.
Okay, House Bill 1788, HD two, as is, are there reservations or no's?
A no vote for Wild Burger, please.
The noted, noted. Are there any other no votes? Reservations adopted.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move to Agenda Three, and I will turn it over to Vice Chair.
Okay, members, uh, we're gonna move on to Agenda Three. First up is House Bill 1568, House Draft two, related to agriculture. First up, to testify, Department of Health.
Hello, Vice Chair. My name is Lauren Kim, representing the Department of Health. We will stand on our testimony, offering comments to the effect that the facilities to which this law would apply would only would add up to basically less than 1% of the population. Um, and the department may not be the appropriate entity the legislature has in mind. So, uh, thank you, and I'll give it over questions.
Thank you very much. Next up, University of Hawaii, Chair Gouya.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Um, the University of Hawaii has submitted written testimony on this bill with comments. However, we continue to research the impact that this may have at the, at our campuses. And at this time, we believe that there actually might be a fairly significant detrimental impact directly on our students and their experience at our campuses. Um, as written, the bill is a little unclear or too vague on the type of operations or transactions that are covered. And so, um, for example, if this bill is interpreted to apply to our concessionaires on our campuses like Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts, Sodexo, um, then we believe the requirements of this bill may either, you know, cause the cost of food and beverage to be, um, exorbitant or even, um, prohibited because these vendors or concessionaires will not be able to comply with the percentages. Uh, so, so those are our comments at this time. We stand by for any questions.
Thank you very much. Next up is, uh, Department of Public Safety, Max Otani.
Hi, good afternoon, Vice Chair, committee members. Max Otani, Director, Department of Public Safety. We will stand on our written comments, uh, that, uh, providing, uh, well, our comments and would be available for any questions you may. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ulupono Initiative, Mike Unikata.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Yamashita, members of the committee. Mike Unikata, on behalf of the Uluponi Initiative, will stand in our testimony in support of this measure. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up, Farm Bureau, Brian Newmoto.
Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Brian Newmoto, here on behalf of the Hoi Farm Bureau, will stand on our written testimony in support.
Okay, uh, individuals for Hunter, Evini Lin. Not present. Uh, individual support. Kapua Maderas. Not present. Any other, okay. Uh, no one else has signed up to testify, members. Are there any questions?
Question.
Representative Kobayashi.
Um, for University of Hawaii. Uh, you mentioned Sodexo, which is, um, what, a contractor of the University of Hawaii. Um. My reading is that, uh, Sodexo doesn't have to report. Is that your understanding?
Well, um, you know, we've had a lot of internal debate about this, uh, quite honestly. We've read the, the bill over and over again, and we don't really, that's what we're still trying to figure out. Um, and I guess, uh, we would like to, our comment would be that, um, it's unclear as to what, who, or what is intended to be covered, um, what type of transactions or operations, um, are intended to be covered. And so, it could be, uh, it construed that way. Um, but if, if we could just get it clarified that it does not, then that would.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next measure. House Bill 2090, HD two, relating to zero admissions transportation. First off is D-Bet, Chung Chang.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Yamashita and, uh, committee members. My name is Chung Chang. I'm the Deputy Director for D-Bet, testifying on behalf of our Director, Mike McCartney. Uh, we stand on our written testimony in strong support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up is Motor Vehicle Industry Licensing Board, Russell Wong.
Good afternoon, Chair Luke and Vice Chair Yamashita and members of the committee. My name is Russell Wong, and I'm, uh, the, an industry member of the Motor Vehicle Licensing Board. The board stands on its written testimony and offers comments expressing concerns that, uh, as written, the bill seems to negate the requirement for licensure of motor vehicle dealers set forth in HRS Chapter 437. Accordingly, to address this issue, the board respectfully requests that the committee amend this measure on page eight, lines one to eighteen, as written in our testimony. Um, our Executive Officer Jenny Yan is also in attendance, uh, to provide testimony, and, um, I'll be available after, for any questions.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Jenny Yan, Executive Officer of the Motor Vehicle Industry Licensing Board. Um, I just wanted to note that on page two of the written testimony for C and D, we referenced moped as defined, um, on section two forty-nine dash one. This could also be replaced with two ninety-one C dash one, so that it is consistent with the moped statute definition reference on page seven of this bill. Um, so that's just a technical amendment that you guys can consider. Um, I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, PUC, Jay Griffin.
Uh, good afternoon, Vice Chair and members. Uh, David Parsons, on behalf of the PUC, um, will stand on our written testimony in support, and I just wanted to highlight that we offer some amendments that would ensure that the commission has the authority to expend the funds called for in this measure, as well as in, um, uh, measured from, from previous sessions um, for your consideration to do, to surpass the measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Office. Hawaii State Energy Office, Scott Glenn.
Hello, Vice Chair Yamashita, members of the committee. Um, thank you very much for hearing this administration measure. Um, we let, we do have testimony, uh, submitted in support, and we'd just like to note a couple of things about it. One, the Committee on Consumer Protection and Commerce, um, did pass the bill out, noted in its standing committee report, some comments and concerns which we addressed in our testimony. um did pass the bill out, noted in its standing committee report, some comments and concerns which we addressed in our testimony. Um, also, we are supportive of the recommended amendments coming from the Motor Vehicle Licensing Board. Uh, we think those are very helpful to clarify the role of licensed dealers. Um, and then lastly, we also noted some potential amendments for your consideration to authorize the expenditure of the funds for the P U C, similar to the Public Utilities Commission's testimony. Thank you very much for your consideration of this uh measure, and I'm available for any questions. Aloha.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, next up, Department of Transportation, Jade Tutai. Not here. We can come back to the comes in. Uh, next up, Ulu Pono Initiative, Mike Munikata.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Ulu Pono will stand on its testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Our Revolution Hawaii. Nobody there. Okay, next up, Blue Planet Foundation.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair and Committee Members, Melissa Mioshero with Blue Planet Foundation. We'll stand on our testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hawaii Dealers Association, David Roth.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, I'm David Roth with the Hawaii Auto Dealers Association. Uh, we're offering comments on this bill, hopefully to help avoid any pitfalls that some of the other states have encountered in this type of legislation. Uh, the first is that it, it needs to have numbers put into the bill. In fact, when you put the numbers in, it sometimes collapses when the numbers are put into it. Uh, a good example might be, um, we don't know what the qualifying amount is for the vehicle or for the rebate. So, for example, if you had a fifty thousand dollar vehicle that could be purchased, and there was a ten thousand dollar rebate, and that person got a seventy five hundred dollar federal tax credit, that's a seventeen thousand five hundred dollar um, of the bundle of money that they could purchase a car. And nowadays, cars are somewhat like, uh, real estate. They often can be sold used cars more than the new car itself. So, what would happen is someone after twenty four months could just flip the car, and then you'd just be able to keep seventeen thousand five hundred of, you know, state and federal money. Uh, that just didn't, wouldn't seem to be the intent of that whole thing. Also, when you put the numbers in as to what applies for low and moderate income, um, there are no numbers that express that. And I put a chart in our testimony just to show what a tremendous variance that is. And what happened in California, when they changed the requirements for the bill, it dramatically changed uh what happened at the dealerships. And so, there was a lot of confusion. In fact, they, they eventually just said they would go back to a smaller amount. I think they had around five thousand, went to seventy five hundred on the hood at some point, because there were so many changes that kept happening, that it kept causing great confusion. And, and that doesn't lend itself to good business practice. Also, when you talk about qualifying vehicles, and you, you talk about manufacturer suggested retail price, in this particular bill, uh, unless you put the word original in front of manufacturer suggested retail price, you can't apply it to a used car. Al- also, you, you may have at a price above fifty thousand to begin with, but when it sells for used, it could be down at thirty thousand, but it couldn't be qualified because its original manufacturer suggested retail price was above fifty thousand. So, that's just among the many uh, issues that we had, pitfalls we ran across on this bill. I really appreciate uh the changes that have been made, uh, some of the requests that we've made, strictly with regard to a licensing and respect for the licensing laws. We appreciate uh the, the fact that everybody has uh been working on this together. We've suggested a working group to work out all these difficult questions. So many pitfalls, we're here to help, and thanks for the chance to log in on us.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up is uh Big Island Electric Vehicle Association. Noel Moran.
Uh, I think it's Hawaii Electric Vehicle Association, and I am standing in for Noel Moran. Uh, my name is Sonia Cass. I'm with Hawaii Electric Vehicle Association, and we are in strong support of uh this measure. Purchases for low and moderate income buyers will help struggling families to lower their transportation costs because E Vs are cheaper to maintain and to fuel. As uh, the law in California has shown, uh, the rebates are a great strategy to clean up transportation. This will fight climate change, and it will also reduce our dependence on foreign oil. Because it's especially important today. I'd like to mention that uh thirty four percent of Hawaii's total oil imports come from Russia. And um studies really have shown that the rebates work. Uh, fifty eight percent of the recipients of the California uh rebate program stated that they would not have purchased their electric vehicle otherwise. And uh, California has some really, really good statistics, and they uh can be looked up on the website of the Center for Sustainable Energy, energycenter.org. And uh, if we need numbers, I think we can copy California's model, which has worked especially well. Thank you for giving me a chance to testify.
Thank you very much. Well, Hawaiian Electric.
Uh, good afternoon, Vice Chair Yamashita and Committee Members. My name is Jun Chi, testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric Company. Uh, we stand on our written testimony in support of this measure, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Uh, John Koa Moto. Individual support.
Well, my name is John Koa Moto. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I'm having uh technical difficulties, so if I'm breaking up too much, just cut me off, and you have my written testimony. Once carbon dioxide is emitted into the atmosphere, it stays there for three hundred to one thousand years, according to NASA, the National Aeronautics and Space Administration. That means that carbon dioxide that was emitted since the beginning of the in- industrial revolution is still in the atmosphere, warming the planet and contributing to climate change. Carbon dioxide that is emitted today will be contributing to climate change for hundreds of years. Conversely, our efforts to reduce the emissions of carbon dioxide will mitigate climate change. The legacy that we live, leave for future generations should be a clean, healthy environment. And this bill helps to build that legacy. Mahalo.
Right, thank you very much. Uh, members, that's the last testifier that signed up. Are there any questions?
Question.
Uh, Representative Koyashi.
Um, for um um Dave Roth. Does this rebate apply to uh vehicles that are leased?
Um, you know, yes, I think it does. Uh, and uh so that, again, we've just pointed to the problems that they had in California with the many changes in the bill. Uh, every time it was changed, it caused the, quite a few problems for the dealers and the customers. That's why we've asked that, that all those questions be filled in before this bill be passed. Thank you for asking that. Uh, uh, I, I do believe that it applies to lease also, but that might be best answered by the uh uh by Scott Glenn.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, members, any other questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to the next bill. House Bill twenty four twenty three, relating to climate change litigation. So, the first up is Department of Transportation. Jade Tutai.
Right, you have a lot of guilty highways.
Proceed.
And my testimony. Okay, I'll take your questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, next is John Koa Moto, individual support.
Aloha, my name is John Koa Moto. Thanks for the opportunity to testify in support of this bill. Last year, the legislature adopted S C R forty four, which declares a climate emergency. We, as a society, must be willing to make the sacrifices and take the drastic measures needed to avoid a climate catastrophe. Many efforts are needed, and this bill is one of them. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Matthew Guyer, individual support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you very much for hearing this and all the other environmental measures. Thing what John Koa Moto just said, we need to do all we can to stop climate change and draw down carbon from the atmosphere. Aloha.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next measure, House Bill eighteen forty two H D one, related to time change impacts on human health. Uh, nobody's signed up to testify in person or on Zoom, so we'll move on to the next.
Chair.
Yes.
Uh, would you uh consider recognizing the Department of Health to testify?
Please, proceed.
Thank, thank you so much. I, my name is Lauren Kim, representing the Department of Health. I'm very sorry, uh, somehow our testimony did not make it up. I, I might not have hit the word, uh, submit button, but uh for the record, the department is in very strong support of this measure. There is no Senate bill moving through, so this is it. Uh, in terms of standalone bills, um, we hear a lot about the electrical grid, saltwater intrusion, um, air particulates, but there is no statewide conversation on the human health impacts. And this is what the specialists that we are requesting will be focused on in coordination with the Sustainability Coordinator and all the other conversations going around climate change. So, uh, we do believe it is time to bring, to elevate the priority of how climate change is gonna affect us as individuals and families and communities, and this is a good first step. So, again, you don't have my written um testimony in front of me, in front of you, but uh we do hope that this bill will move um as drafted or with the um appropriation flagged out. Thank you so much, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Um, could you submit your testimony ready for the committee, so we have a complete record? And with that, yeah, thank you. And with that, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill sixteen thirty seven H D one, relating to renewable energy. First up is the uh Dean Nisha, D C C A.
Super. Sorry, uh, aloha and good afternoon, Vice Chair Yamashita, members of the committee, Dean Nishina with the Division of Consumer Advocacy. You have our written testimony in for, in, in front of you. If I can just summarize, you know, um, we support the tenth of the, the measure, but uh we, we believe that this particular version, you know, raises questions with respect to um, wh- whether or not there, there will be some um certainty as to what the, the renewable energy project developers may face, whether in the form of property tax uh assessments or, or through this in lieu fee. And so with that, I, I'm available for questions if any. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, P U C.
Uh, good afternoon, Vice Chair and members, uh, P U C will stand on its written testimony. Um, and we had a, uh, we're in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Hawaii State Energy Office, Scott Glenn.
Oh, I, Vice Chair, um, I also have with me Deputy Energy Officer Kirsten Turner. And we submitted testimony in support of this, and just want to note that the purpose of this bill is to try to create certainty where there used to be some. Um, but now there is uncertainty related to actions that the city took regarding real property tax for the long-term viability of the financial model for renewable energy projects. And if I could uh hand the mic to Deputy Energy Officer Kirsten Baumgart Turner to just flesh out a couple more of the points that, that we wanted to raise.
Yep, proceed.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, aloha. Um, well, we, as he mentioned, while the situation was part, partially remedied by the city and county in Bill thirty nine, uh, we feel it's really important to have certainty going forward. Um, because the uh renewable energy developers that uh are planning projects uh need that certainty to do the financing for their pro- projects. Uh, you'll excuse me if you hear baby crying. I have to telework today, and he just hit his head. So, he's screaming, I apologize. Um, the um, the uh importance of this, of the surety for this can't be overstated in that the um I'm sorry.
Hold on, hold on one second. Um, anyone who is uh not testifying, could you put your mic on mute? Thank you. I think the Representative Martin Yards is on. Oh, he's over there. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, but nobody's crying over there, so we're good. Okay, please proceed.
Okay, sorry. Um, but the importance here is that renewable energy developers have the long-term certainty that they can get the investors engaged in their projects and be able to have uh a consistency that they can count on, because if they don't have that for the long run, the investors, uh, they won't be able to line up the financing. And they need to be able to have that financing in place in order to bring in the project on time and be able to also uh assure the price and negotiate the price with the um uh utilities and that negotiated price that goes into their power purchase agreement. And that agreement is set. And so, going forward, if those conditions change, that means that they have to renegotiate those agreements, and the P U C also would have to go back and reapprove uh P P As. And we have had projects in the pipeline that have fallen out as a result of this uncertainty. So, it, it, it is um absolutely integral to our ability to keep the pipeline moving forward and filling the need, um particularly upon the closure of the coal plant. Was there um anything else you wanted me to add to that, Scott?
No, thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next to testify, Hawaii Solar Energy Association.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Uh, I'm Rocky Mold for the Hawaii Solar Energy Association. Uh, I'll stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Hawaiian Electric. Okay, we'll come back to that one. Next up, uh, Tax Foundation of Hawaii.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair, Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii. Uh, we'll stand on our written testimony, be available for questions.
Thank you very much. We'll go back one more time to Hawaiian Electric. Two seconds, one second. Thank you very much. Members, any questions of the testifiers?
Or a question?
Representative Koyashi, please.
Um, I'm not sure who can answer this, maybe Scott Glenn, um. Cam? At present, can the counties impose a fee to do some of the things, I mean, within some of the parameters in the bill?
Um, Brett, may I ask the Kirsten to assist me with this?
Yeah. Yeah, so um with this bill, the um county, can you repeat the question? I wanna make sure you're talking about the bill or the existing uh ordinance that's in place.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the bill. It seems to me that counties can already do some of the things outlined in the bill.
The, the county right now um does not have the opportunity to do a fee in lieu of taxation. Right now, under the real property tax ordinance, uh, they uh assess taxes under certain classifications dependent upon the real property that the uh project is located on. And the situation that arose was that this, there were projects that were located on agricultural property whose um assessments were, the classification was assessed at an industrial classification. And it is within the right of the city and county to interpret the classification according to their ordinance, but they do not have the right to uh impose a fee in lieu of that taxation. So, this would be a requirement of a change in uh county ordinance and or through a ta- uh state bill.
But isn't, I mean, that's my point. If the counties change their ordinance, they could do some of the things outlined in this bill.
It, the, if they change their ordinance, they could do so. But it would have to be what's outlined in this bill, the fee in lieu of. Under Bill thirty nine, uh, it's a very different treatment. What they're doing is um counting the valuation of the project based on where the connection is between the project and the land. And so that has changed how the valuation of the project is being done, but it's still being classified um at the industrial rate.
All right, thank you very much. Members, any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill sixteen forty H D two, uh, relating to recycling. First up is uh Department of Health, Environmental Health Administration.
Uh, good afternoon, Vice Chair Yamashita and uh members of the
Uh, good afternoon, Vice Chair Yamashita and members of the Finance Committee. My name is Michael Burke, and I'm with the Department of Health's Office of Solid Waste Management. Uh, we submitted written testimony on H B sixteen forty H D two in support, and we stand on our written testimony. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. House uh next up is Consumer Technology Association. Iho Koito.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Mihoko Ito, on behalf of the Consumer Technology Association. Um, we are respectfully opposed to this measure, and the reason is that while uh the goal might be to increase electronics recycling, um, we do believe that the bill is aimed at the wrong target. Um, what it does is it increases collection weight requirements over time for manufacturers. And it doesn't take into account the fact that electronic devices are becoming lighter and lighter over time. So in fact, if you look at the history, uh, as noted in our testimony, the devices are the collection, um the actual collection amounts are going down over time, and so manufacturers simply won't be able to meet these increased targets. Um, we do know that there are other approaches used in other states to modernize uh e-waste laws, and we'd be happy to discuss those with the committee uh or the introducer. Um, but uh we are opposed to this bill. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, members, any questions? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next measure, House Bill sixteen forty-four H D one relating to environmental protection. First up is Department of Health.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair and Committee members. My name is Greg Edwards, Department of Health, Food and Drug Branch. The department stands on our written testimony, offering comments. We'll be available for any questions.
All right, thank you very much. That was the only testifier that signed up. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill. Uh. Next bill is House Bill sixteen forty-five H D one relating to the environment. First up, Department of Health.
Good afternoon again, Vice Chair Yamashita and uh members of the Finance Committee. Uh, again, this is Michael Burke with the Department of Health's Office of Solid Waste Management. Uh, we've submitted uh testimony, written testimony with uh offering comments uh on this bill. And uh, we stand on that testimony, and I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Surfer Foundation. Not present. Okay, last testifier is Kapua Mederos, individual in support. Not present. Okay, members, there's no other testifiers signed up. Is there any questions for this partner? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next measure, House Bill twenty-eight-eight, House Draft two relating to financing. First up, Debit.
Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Uh, thank you for scheduling and hearing this uh administration bill. Debit stands on its written testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney General's Office.
Thank you, Vice Chair Yamashita and members of the committee. Uh, my name is Greg Kinkley. I'm a Deputy Attorney General. You have my testimony before you, setting forth our comments. We observe that each successive draft of this bill makes this measure stronger against an attack on its constitutionality as a contracts clause violation. Uh, with the commercial paths now requiring prior consent and only the residential paths remaining in issue, the non-acceleration provision uh makes the exposure to private lenders as balance against the public policy benefits. Uh, makes the measure more reasonable and uh less of a substantial impairment than in the previous drafts. I'll remain available for comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up is D C C A, Dean Nishi- Nishina.
Aloha again, Vice Chair, members of the committee. You have our written testimony before you, uh, and I stand uh offering comments, available for questions if any. Thank you.
All right, next up is Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority, Wen Yama Moro Law.
Happy Aloha Friday, Vice Chair and members of the committee. The authority stands on its written testimony in strong support. I'd like to also mention that property assessed legislation has been enabled in thirty-eight or seventy-six percent of our states and highlight that it is the voluntary special tax assessment mechanism that unlocks new markets for private capital lenders. If the property assessed loan is subordinate to existing liens, then it will maintain the status quo without any new private capital being invested. In fact, there is one state with a program with a subordinate lien, and I understand to date there has not been one loan made. My testimony includes an additional guardrail to limit the amount of the residential part property assessed loan to alleviate concerns from the banking industry. But I do want to stress that this that this not only uh that the property assessed uh financing loan not only adds value to the property, but in the event of foreclosure, unlike a mortgage, the balance of the property assessed loan would not be due and payable. Only the amount of the current and unpaid assessments. In other words, say a property owner made a thirty thousand dollar loan to replace its cesspool. In the event of foreclosure, only the current and delinquent assessments, say three to four hundred dollars, would be due. Being in the last twenty-five percent of the states who have not yet adopted property assessed financing, we are fortunate that we are able to learn from existing programs and have incorporated their best practices into this legislation. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up is P U C, Jay Griffith.
Uh, good afternoon, Vice Chair and members. Uh, David Parsons on behalf of the P U C. Uh, P C offered uh written testimony uh supporting the intent, comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Committee members, Ted Boland for Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. As many of you know, Hawaii's got a large cesspool problem with eighty-eight thousand cesspools that need upgrading by twenty fifty. It's very expensive, and a lot of people are not going to be able to afford to do it. This measure, which High Rock strongly supports, would open up some capital so that people could upgrade their cesspools. And that would be a good thing for the individuals, and it'll be a good thing for the state in terms of its water pollution. So High Rock strongly supports this bill and is available for questions if any. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Hawaii Solar Energy Association.
Aloha, Vice Chair and members. Uh, I am Rocky Mold uh with Hawaii Solar Energy Association. Uh, we stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Pace Nation. Juan Martinez.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, I'm with Pace Nation. Uh, we track this legislation across the country. Legislation like this, we support this bill because it provides homeowners a low-cost financing option for clean energy, storm hardening, cesspool conversion projects. It's going to accomplish a lot for your constituents. And it is, as uh Ms. Yamamoto Law uh explained, it's very uh it's the program has matured. Over three hundred thousand homeowners across the country have used Pace, and it works very well because of that senior lien position. That's what unlocks the long-term financing, the low interest rates, the long repayment period, the affordable monthly payments. That's what makes it work for your constituents. Uh, and it's proven to be very safe. It's also proven to be very accessible for your constituents because it's not predicated on their FICO score or anything like that. Uh, the data shows that fewer than one in ten thousand homeowners ends up defaulting on a pace assessment, and in those instances, they're still protected because, as Ms. Yamamoto Law explained, if they default on their pace assessment, only that year's uh uh assess portion of the assessment is due as opposed to a second mortgage where the entire balance is due, right? It becomes a very different affair. If you end up with medical bills, you can't pay it. You're only talking about a couple of hundred, uh, a couple thousand dollars, a thousand, two thousand, as opposed to the entire balance of the assessment. So it's a very uh good program. It's a great program. Very excited about this legislation. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, Genevieve Sherman. Individual in support.
Yes, hello. Um, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for your time. Um, I am Genevieve Sherman with New Bean Green Capital. Uh, we stand in support of our written testimony. Uh, we are a C-Pace financier and have worked with the bill authors on many of the amendments to the bill that have strengthened it, and we are available to help address any questions on commercial pace. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, next up, Tax Foundation of Hawaii, Tammy Yamashita. Tax Foundation, up here. Okay, moving on, Hawaii Bankers Association.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. The Hawaii Bankers Association stands in its testimony in opposition to this measure and would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up, Hawaii Credit Union League.
Aloha, Vice Chair and members. Stephanie Sakamoto on behalf of the Hawaii Credit Union League will stand on our testimony in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, that's all the testifiers we have that signed up. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill eighteen zero-one, House Draft one relating to energy efficiency. Uh, first up is Department of Accounting and General Services, Audrey Donal, Deputy Director.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Yamashita and members of the committee. I'm Audrey Donal, Deputy Director for Department of Accounting and General Services. That extends on our written testimony in support of House Bill eighteen zero-one, and we'll be here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, uh, Dex, Richard Lewis.
He's standing as my backup, sir.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. Next is Blue Planet Foundation.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, Committee members. Melissa Miaschero with Blue Planet Foundation. Thank you so much for hearing this measure. Energy efficiency is often overlooked in our conversations about our clean energy future. Uh, so we'll stand on our testimony in written support of this bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, individual in support, John Kau Motos.
Aloha. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. This bill complements H B twenty-four twenty-three H D one, which was taken up earlier in the agenda. That bill encourages the use of materials that reduce the carbon footprint. This bill encourages energy efficient practices in managing the operations of buildings. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, Matthew Guyer, individual in support.
Well, Vice Chair, members of the committee, thank you for hearing this measure and echoing uh what John and Melissa said. Efficiency is so important, and especially with rising energy prices, it's gonna make uh financial sense as well for the state to be as energy efficient as possible. Aloha.
Thank you. Members, any questions of the testifiers?
Uh, Vice Chair, this is Scott Glenn with the Energy Office. I'm sorry, I think we submitted testimony.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, we we submit a testimony in support. Um, and just wanted to note as well that um by pursuing energy efficiency, it lowers electricity bills for the state, which in turn saves taxpayer dollars. So overall, this is an opportunity for the state to lead by example on the goals that we have set. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, I don't see a testimony you could submit to the committee, so we have a full record. Thank you very much. Members, any questions? Thank you. Any any questions? Okay, uh, moving on to the next bill, House Bill twenty-two fifty-five relating to energy efficiency. First up is uh Hawaii State of Energy Office, Scott Glenn. Did this one?
Hi, Vice Chair. Yes, uh, we also submitted testimony on this one, and thank you. We stand on our testimony in support.
All right. Thank you very much. That's the only testifier we have. Members, any questions of the testifier? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill eighteen oh nine H D two uh relating to energy efficiency. First up is uh Department of Taxation.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Ted Shari Eche for the Department of Taxation and will stand on our written testimony, providing comments.
Thank you. Uh, Hawaii State Energy Office, Scott Glenn.
Aloha, Vice Chair. Uh, we submitted testimony in support and note that um the renewable fuels tax credit was a tax credit that lapsed in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and this bill would seek to restore a version of it. Um, and we are in support of renewable fuels as being a critical part of our clean energy goals. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Tax Foundation of Hawaii, Tammy Yamachika, with comments. Up here, okay, next, Climate Protectors Hawaii.
Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Ted Boland for the Climate Protectors Hawaii. This uh renewable tax credit bill is a good idea. Uh, the renewables tax credits will help Hawaii uh develop the renewables that it needs. I would, however, say that not all renewables are created equal, and some are actually not good for the environment. The ones that, for example, wood burning and other ones that um emit a lot of carbon are not uh things that should be supported with tax credits. So Climate Protectors Hawaii are proposing two amendments as set forth in our written testimony. On page two, lines seventeen to nineteen, we add some specificity to the language that's in the bill now that says that the uh feedstock should be substantially below that of fossil fuels. And instead, we have a suggestion that are at least seventy-five percent below the lowest fossil fuel life cycle greenhouse gas emissions for equivalent British thermal units. The other important point is that wood burning is really a double whammy and and would be terrible for the climate. And so to have renewable tax credits for burning wood biomass is a really bad policy. And we would strongly urge the bill to be amended uh to indicate that uh on page seven, lines fourteen and fifteen, renewables feedstocks should mean biomass crops other than trees or wood. So explicitly exclude those. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this bill. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very very much. Hawaii Gas.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair and members of the committee. Julie Yunker with Hawaii Gas in support of this measure. We respectfully ask the committee to consider the following amendments to the bill. Add wastewater in the definition of a renewable source and include a refundable tax credit, which would allow the credits to benefit the rate pairs if the developers do not have a tax appetite. Hawaii Gas also provides these additional comments. H B eighteen zero-nine H D one has inserted an amendment B. The Hawaii State Energy Office shall subsection four certify that the renewable fuels produced have life-cycled emissions substantially below that of fossil fuels. We understand the legislative intent of this amendment and agree that the analysis is important. However, we would like to call attention to the fact that the life-cycle greenhouse gas emission analysis is mandated by statute to be part of the Public Utilities Commission decision-making processes on these projects. Requiring the H S E O to recertify this annually is redundant and increases costs to file. Due to redundancy, we respectfully request consideration of committee to delete subsection B four. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, that's all the testifiers we have for this measure. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to House Bill twenty-two seventy-six H D one. That's bill on the agenda relating to energy. One second. Yeah. Yep. Uh, let's see. First up is Department of Taxation.
Department stands on its written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, the state, Hawaii State Energy Office, Scott Glenn.
Aloha, Vice Chair. Uh, the Energy Office stands on its testimony, providing comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, Lupono Initiative, Micah Munikata.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Yamashita, Chair Luke, members of the committee, Micah Munikata on behalf of the Lupono Initiative. We center our written testimony and support. You have our written comments. Uh, something I want, just wanted to highlight and emphasize are just towards the end of our testimony, we referenced some of the recommendations made by the tax condition for for highlighting some of the benefits that could come back to the community with such a policy. Um, available for questions should you have. Thank you, Vice Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes. Okay, next up is Environmental Justice Task Force for Faith Action. Susan Gorman, Jane. Not present. Next is Grassroots Institute of Hawaii. Not present. Uh, next is Citizens for Climate Lobby Hawaii. Not present, Department of.
Yes, yes, here I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, hi, aloha and good afternoon. Thank you, uh, Chair Luke and members of the committee. My name is Molly Whiteley. I'm testifying today uh in strong support of H B twenty-two seventy-eight on behalf of Citizens Climate Lobby Hawaii. And uh Citizens Climate Lobby Hawaii has a membership of nine hundred uh plus. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan grassroots advocacy organization. We focus on national and local policy. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan grassroots advocacy organization. We focus on national and local policies to address the climate change solutions. We appreciate this opportunity to testify. We stand on the written testimony submitted and just would like to highlight that this carbon cash back policy would significantly reduce carbon emissions while by incentivizing local residents as well as visitors. And it makes middle and low income households whole as a progressive policy by returning the revenue directly to the people. We thank you again and we strongly encourage passage of this bill for the people of Hawaii and for our beloved and endangered planet. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Hawaii Transportation Association.
Aloha Chair Luke and Vice Chair Yamashita. We do oppose increasing fuel related taxes on the industry based on the resulting increase in prices for everything and everyone, which threatens the well-intended tax credits to everyone to try and ease cost impact. Furthermore, expending funds for this purpose also handicaps a fleet's conversion to ZEVs, which is already a daunting proposition due to vehicle and fueling infrastructure costs unlike privately owned vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Citizen Climate Lobby Hawaii. Molly White, Whitley. Oh, she went. Oh, sorry. Okay, um, next is Practical Policy Institute of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair and committee members. My name's Clay Churchill, President of the Practical Policy Institute of Hawaii. And we respectfully are opposed to this bill. Our testimony speaks for itself, but I'd like to highlight just a few points. Our view is climate change is real, as it should be obvious, but we cannot tax our way out of it. This bill does nothing but add to the already high cost of living in Hawaii and it presents kind of a Hobson's choice to our residents and taxpayers. Either pay more at the gas pump or perhaps buy an electric car and previous testimony was the average cost is twelve thousand more. So either way, it's going to add to cost of living and the cost of electricity. Will this increase the pace at which one electric converts to renewables? We don't think so and totally out of the taxpayer's control that he's going to have to pay that surcharge on the electricity bill. So our view is that the legislature has kind of a choice. Do you value the taxpayers and the residents and their cost of living situation, which is a real problem, as opposed to kind of an illusory goal of trying to make sure that the cost of the temperature some eighty years from now doesn't increase more than two degrees? Our view is that the the cost of living is a real problem and the legislature should address this problem and not add to the burden on our residents to the state. I'll be glad to answer any questions anybody might have.
Thank you very much. Next up is Airlines for America, Sean Williams. Not present. Next up is John Kawamoto, individual in support.
Hello, my name is John Kawamoto. Thank you for this opportunity to testify in support of this bill. Climate change is the biggest market failure in history. Thousands of economists, including twenty eight Nobel Prize economists, have endorsed the model contained in this bill as a substantial step forward toward mitigating climate change. The legislature appropriated one hundred fifty thousand dollars to study this model and UHERO has issued a thorough examination of the relevant issues. The study concludes that the low tax scenario would reduce carbon emissions substantially and that it would be progressive if the tax revenue were distributed to households in equal shares. In fact, the majority of Hawaii's households would come out ahead financially with this bill. And this bill is consistent with the low tax scenario and for that reason, I support this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up is Douglas Higgins, individual in support.
Chair Luke and Vice Chair, thank you for hearing this bill. The carbon cash back HB two two seven eight is a good bill. It, as John said, the UHERO supports, the UHERO studies supports it. The Hawaii Tax Review Commission study supports it and three thousand economists nationwide have supported this as a method of driving innovation in renewables. It's good for the economy. It's good for the residents of Hawaii. The data that is examined was for Hawaii residence households and done both at the UHERO level, at the state level and at national level, and eighty percent of the families will benefit. I'm a resident of Maui and in addition, Maui County Council passed two resolutions support of national and local legislation. This is the local legislation they are in support of. I urge you to to support this bill as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Paul Bernstein, individual in support.
Aloha Chair Luke, Vice Chair Yamashita and committee members. Mahalo for hearing HB two two seven eight. My name is Paul Bernstein. I am one of the co-authors of the two UHERO studies on carbon pricing. I stand on my testimony in strong support of this bill with amendments to the payout tables. I believe carbon cash back, which is embodied in this bill, would most effectively, efficiently and equitably transition us to a low carbon economy. As the last two testifiers have said, our studies found that almost all households on average benefit from this policy. The dividend more than compensates for the increase in fossil fuel prices that arise from this bill. I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Matthew Dyer, individual in support.
Aloha, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you very much for hearing this measure. This is a very important measure to pass. It is probably one of our last chances to do something significant for the environment to make a real change that will reduce our greenhouse gases, our pollution, and do it in a way that is equitable, giving money back to the people so that the people who are polluting, the companies who are bringing in these polluting fuels are the ones who pay and the people will profit. So I'd also like to highlight, I am the Director of Public Outreach for Faith Action Environmental Justice Task Force. I'm testifying as an individual, but I do see Susan Gorman Chang, who was called earlier. I would, I would hope that you would call on her again to submit her testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Carol Cam, individual in support.
Is my sound on?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the Finance Committee. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify on carbon cash back HB twenty two seventy eight. Climate change has affected me in several ways. Elders suffered severe dehydration and students suffered oppressive heat. Drop and wildfires occur more often. Nearby coral reefs die. Storms damage electricity and communication. Storm debris and coastal erosion block highways and goods and services are interrupted. The reasons for my position on this bill are Hawaii needs cost effective climate action quickly, such as a progressive economic policy that protects low and middle income households. Hawaii needs to quickly transition to cleaner energy and transportation. Hawaii can do that with a gradually rising tax on fossil fuels entering our economy and by passing along revenues to residents. Price increases can be neutralized if the money is returned as dividends to residents. Citizens Climate Lobby affirms the following well-founded reasons for a carbon cash back bill. A carbon fee is the least intrusive, smallest government solution to the problem. It requires much less government than regulations or government spending. Not addressing climate change is likely to grow the government as more money is spent on disaster relief, crop insurance, flood prevention, et cetera. Carbon cash back policy is the most cost effective way to reduce carbon emissions at the scale and speed that is necessary. And taxing pollution is perfectly consistent with free market principles. There is broad agreement among economists that carbon pricing reduces emissions. Real world examples back it up. Details matter. What is covered, what the price is and how quickly it rises and are there loopholes such as offsets? Experts agree that carbon pricing is an essential component of comprehensive climate solutions. While it is not the entire solution, pricing carbon can quickly and effectively reduce emissions across the entire economy. Solving climate change will require a big investment in new emissions reduction, infrastructure and technology. Wind turbines, solar panels, electric vehicles, building retrofits, et cetera. Most of this investment will come from the private sector, corporations, small businesses, households, et cetera. And some will be funded by public investments at the local, state and national level. Though innovation proposals may be beneficial, they are only a partial solution if they don't reduce emissions quickly. A legitimate question is then how to encourage innovation across all possible solutions. Government tax incentives and spending focus unevenly on a limited set of solutions and do not provide a long-term market for the innovation. A price on carbon emissions creates an even price signal, encouraging all innovations to reduce emissions. Hawaii has the nation's highest electricity and natural gas rates. So Hawaii will continue to suffer from higher energy prices if it depends on imported fossil fuels. All of us need to quit using fossil fuels quickly. I believe carbon pricing can be very effective and fair in helping to do that. I urge you to pass HB twenty two seventy eight carbon cash back. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's all the testifiers we had that signed up. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we will recess for decision making. Fifteen minutes recess. Fifteen minutes recess.
Thank you, members. Thank you, audience members. Video financial, we could be for decision making on our one-thirty agenda. So first up, it is House Bill fifteen-sixty, House Draft Two. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
Okay, House Bill fifteen-sixty, House Draft Two, as is Chairful Tsai, Vice Chairful Tsai, Representative Brumko.
Aye.
Eli.
Aye.
Hope. Excuse. Iligan.
Aye.
Kobayashi.
Aye.
Martis.
Aye.
Nishimoro.
Aye.
Russo.
Aye.
Sayama.
Aye.
Tam.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Wahlberger.
Aye.
McDermott. Excuse. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill twenty-ninety, House Draft Two. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
Okay, members, we're voting on House Bill twenty-ninety, HD Two. Recommendation is to pass as is. Noting the excuse absence of Representative Hope and McDermott. And this will be throughout this agenda. Unless noted. And are there any reservations? Any notes adopted?
Thank you. Next up is House Bill twenty-four-twenty-three, House Draft One. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
Okay, members, voting on House Bill twenty-four-twenty-three, HD One, as is. On any reservations? Notes adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill eighteen-forty-two, House Draft One. Recommendation is to pass as a HD Two, blanking out the appropriation amount and position counts and technical non-substantive changes. Any discussions? Not feasible.
Okay, House Bill eighteen-forty-two, HD One with amendments. Any reservations? Notes adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill sixteen-thirty-seven, House Draft One. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
Okay, voting on House Bill sixteen-thirty-seven, HD One. Uh, any reservations? No. Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill sixteen-forty, House Draft Two. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
Yeah, House Bill sixteen-forty, HD Two, as is. Any reservations? Notes adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill sixteen-forty-four, House Draft One. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
Yeah, House Bill sixteen-forty-four, HD One. Recommendation not as is. Any reservations? Those adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill sixteen-forty-five, House Draft One. Recommendation is to pass as a HD Two, affecting the effectiveness and technical non-substantive changes. Any discussion?
Okay, House Bill eight-bee-sixteen, forty-five, HD One with amendments. Any reservations? No. Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill two-zero-eight-eight, House Draft Two. Recommendation is to pass as a HD Three, blanking out the amount of technical non-substantive changes.
Okay, uh, voting on House Bill twenty-eighty-eight, HD Two with amendments. Any reservations? Notes adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill eighteen-oh-one, House Draft One. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
Okay, House Bill eighteen-oh-one, House Draft One, as is. Any reservations? No. Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill two-two-five-five. Recommendation is to pass as a HD One, affecting the effectiveness and technical non-substantive changes. Any discussion? If not, please take the vote.
Okay, House Bill twenty-two-fifty-five with amendments. Any reservations? No. Adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Draft, I mean, House Bill eighteen-oh-nine, House Draft Two. Recommendation is to pass as a HD Three, blanking out the amount and technical non-substantive changes. Any discussion? If not, please take the vote.
Yeah, House Bill eighteen-zero-nine, HD Two with amendments. Any reservations? Those adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill two-two-seven-eight, House Draft One. Recommendation is to pass as is any discussion. If not, please take the vote.
Okay, House Bill twenty-two-seventy-eight, HD One, as is. Any reservations? No. Adopted.
Thank you. With that, committee is adjourned.